Alright guys, it's six o'clock. Let's get the meeting started. Please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay Sean, are we live? Okay, thank you. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda? That was Jeannie.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Jason, are you with us? Says he's on. Oh, we're four out of five this point, so.
Jason is here.
Says he is.
Yeah.
Oh, he's got his mic shut off. Or they all shut up, Sean.
Hello?
There you are. Can you hear us?
I can. Did you hear me now?
Yep, yeah, we can now. You in favor as well?
I was an aye. Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, so we have, right off the bat, Communications, do we have anything?
Yeah, National History Day.
We do. So Dean, if you're here, or if it's on Dean Smith, do you want to introduce the students and then they can present?
Technology, it's such a cool thing.
Makes everything easier.
Clara, Esri, Iris, and Olivia, could you just come over here? Just for a second, just, I want to show you off and... So, National History Day is a really cool project. Students pick a topic and they decide, they pick it themselves. They decide if they're, what kind of research they're gonna do, if they're gonna do it individual like Claire, or if they're gonna do it group like these three girls. They did, they picked their topic and they researched the heck out of it. And all four of these girls know way more about their topic than I do and I bet a whole lot of the people in this state. Then, they decide what kind of project they're gonna make. Maybe they're gonna make a performance like three of them did. Maybe they're gonna make an exhibit. Maybe they're gonna make a documentary or a website. They pick their project. Our teams started way back in October researching and in January, we had History Night at Housel and some of you came and thank you very much for helping. And then in mid-March, we took a team to Regionals. These girls all took first place in their categories and qualified for state. And a couple weeks ago, week and a half ago, they qualified to represent Washington State to Nationals. And so they are part of Team Washington now. And we're very proud of them, but they're still our kids. And so they've come to show you their projects. I just wanted to have them say their name and introduce themselves. And then they have the performance that's videotaped and Clara's exhibit is in the front here, so.
Hi, I'm Clara. I did the exhibit on the history of the women's suffrage movement in Washington Territory and Washington State.
Clara is a sophomore in high school. She's part of whoosh, whoosh. And the next three are seventh graders. And this is kinda crazy for me. We have sent kids to Nationals before. When we started open door sixth, seventh, and eighth, oftentimes the kids have taken over in a couple years and really improved. They're seventh graders and they're going to Nationals. I'm Olivia. Sure.
Hi, my name's Olivia Smasney.
Hi, my name is Ezra Roy.
Hi, my name is Iris Slonaker.
So Ezra, Iris, and Olivia. And they did a performance on Nez Perce Treaty. And I think we're gonna see that here in a minute. And Clara did hers on women's voting rights in Washington State.
Before we start, I just wanted to remind everybody that you should silence your cell phones so we don't interrupt students' performances. And if you could just watch the door so not, so that people don't come in during the performance, that'd be wonderful. Okay, let's start it. Could you introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'll.
Hi, my name is Olivia Smasney.
Hi, my name is Iris Slonaker.
Hi, my name is Ezra Roy. Our title is "How Failed Diplomacy Led to Ongoing Debate: Attempted Diplomatic Interactions Between the Native Peo and American Government." May we begin?
No.
Starting in the early 1850s, American settlers streamed into-
No.
Professional.
Sorry, just wanted to remind everybody that you should silence your cell phones so we don't interrupt students' performances. And if you could just watch the door so not, so that people don't come in during the performance, that'd be wonderful. Okay, let's start it. Could you introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Olivia Smasney.
Hi, my name is Iris Slonaker.
Hi, my name is Ezra Roy. Our title is "How Failed Diplomacy Led to Ongoing Debate: Attempted Diplomatic Interactions Between the Native Peo and American Government." May we begin? Starting in the early 1850s, American settlers streamed into the Nez Perce's land and many debates arose.
Originally planned to diplomatic exchanges, the treaties of 1855 and 1863 sought out to create agreements and contain conflicts between the Nez Perce and the whites.
However, this attempted diplomacy failed and caused debates because white men never followed through any agreements in the treaties.
Grandma, why are we here?
Well, Fern, on the surface, Laual Lake just looks like any other lake. But when you look deeper, you see the braving people, or as the white people call us in Nez Perce, our ancestors and their brutal history. Just as coyote made us, our ancestors shaped the Pacific Northwest as we know it.
It sounds so interesting.
To understand our people's roots, you must first hear their history and how they lost their land. In the early 1850s, when settlers started flying west, many debates began between our ancestors and white people, eventually leading to a treaty that had many consequences. My friends, we are glad to see you. We are glad to see all of the Indians around here. And what we say is spoken to all tribes. As a United States diplomat, I, Isaac Stevens, Governor and Superintendent Indian Affairs for the Territory of Washington, will begin reading the treaty. The said Nez Perce tribe of Indians hereby cede, relinquish, and convey to the United States all their right, title, and interest in, and to the country occupied or claimed by them, bounded and described as followed to wit.
This land is not for sale. It is Mother Nature's and the Great Spirit proves us living here. I am sure Looking Glass feels the same way.
Yes, I agree with Chief Joseph. This land is not for sale. We will presume where we left off and divide thereby, and if any of the said Indians commit any depredations on any other Indians within the Territory of Washington, the same rule shall prevail as I prescribed in this treaty in cases of depredations against citizens. This could look like war. The Nez Perce are known for never killing a white man, and I would like to keep it that way.
Possibly. I will sign and forget all of what you promise.
Signing this treaty is a good decision for your people. While you can make money heading west, the settlers have been looking for more places to farm and live. And I believe they'll approve this new treaty. I personally think this treaty will contain future debates.
I, Chief Joseph of Laual Band, sends chief because I'm a man of peace, not because I agree with what says. However, my people, the white settlers, need to come to an agreement. And this treaty looks like that agreement. At least it is an attempt to gain peace.
I was brought to believe in keeping peace as well as treating your land with respect and importance. I intend to keep those beliefs. For the time being, this will maintain peace between my tribe and our neighbors.
We have been waiting for the promises the American government has had treaty all those moons ago. We obey the rules of the treaty, but the settlers do not. One more settlers have been coming on our reservation and destroying nature, wanting for gold that belongs to our mother. Looking Glass, they took 7.5 million acres of our land and what do we give in return?
The gold is not fair, so you should not be taking it. The settlers even building towns here. Towns? This is not their land, this is our home. We made an agreement with the whites and they broke it. Father, you asked to see me?
Hello? Looking Glass, will you mind giving me moments of thought with my son? There's talk of new treaty. The settlers are digging for gold and building towns on all our land. Soon, you will lead our band. Use your name, young Joseph, and follow my lead. Go to the next treaty council, whether that is this year or the next. Represent our band and prove to the whites we are not obstacles.
As you wish, my father. People will begin to know me as young Chief Joseph. I will go to the next treaty council and represent our band.
Be careful. The agents who tried tricking you into giving up our land. Do not let the whites do to us what they've done to so many others. Do not fall for their lies.
I, C.H. Hale, Superintendent for the Indian Affairs of the Washington Territory, am here as a diplomat to discuss an advanced treaty. This treaty will yet again give the United States only a tiny amount of your land. You will only be allowed to hunt, fish, and gather in this reservation. Hale, how will this help my people? We will give you and your people schools, money, and other helpful provisions. I have been in touch with agents and you will make sure you get these. What do you think, Chief Lawyer?
I see this agreement as fair, as well as contains keep peace between my people and yours.
I understand Chief Lawyer's homeland is in this new reservation, but my band's homeland is not. The settlers will just continue to trespass on our land. Lawyer, if you sign this treaty, we will never forgive you. Lawyer, I strongly suggest you sign this agreement and represent your nation with dignity.
I will sign it on behalf of my tribe.
This council is adjourned. You have correctly exercised your title as head chief. This treaty will now be enforced on your tribe and the American people.
I, Chief Lawyer, send this treaty because I feel the need to protect the land we have. Hale, twice we have given helpful provisions. My people greatly benefit from this. I believe the whites only mean well.
Neither Lawyer nor any other chief had authority to sell this land. It has always belonged to my people. I know Lawyer signed this treaty out of the good of his heart, but this decision led to major consequences. Now, they will force us to the new reservation. And many chiefs did not sign the treaty. We will not move from our home. My father told me to never give up a mother's land and that is a promise I will keep.
Hello, Joseph. I have come bearing bad news. You and your people need to move to the new reservation.
My band is not going to move from our homeland. As you know, General Howard, we did not sign the treaty. We never will agree to what it says.
Young Joseph, you try to only suffer from your selfish decisions. But in that wish to pay trouble, we merely want to continue the peace between my people and yours. You have three days to move to the new reservation. If you are not here in that time, I summon everyone to fight and I will send my soldiers to drive you on.
My people are in no means forced to abide by my decision. I will inform them of your message, but they will come to their own conclusion. General, you've always been kind to my peoples and I hope you decide to respect my choices. After Chief Joseph's meeting with General Howard, his band decided to move to the new reservation. All they wanted was peace. It was a brutal and heartbreaking struggle for them to leave their beloved homeland. The journey was difficult. Many died through conflict with the settlers, eventually leading to a long, heartbreaking war until Joseph realized he had no choice but to surrender. So he made his way to General Howard and spoke these words. Hear me, my chiefs. My heart is sick and sad. From where the sun now stands, I will fight no more forever. After his band surrendered, they were forced across the country, first to Kansas, then Oklahoma. His reservations were formed in the Nez Perce. Many did not return to Laual Valley. Nowadays, Nez Perce and the American government still struggle to agree. Now Fern, do you understand what failed diplomacy is?
Not exactly.
Well, diplomacy is an agreement between two sides, like a treaty, and failed diplomacy is when that agreement may does not turn out the way it is meant to.
Just like in our history.
Yes, exactly. Do you remember what happened after the whites created the treaty?
The treaties were never lived up to.
You are correct. Failed diplomacy and failed diplomatic attempts in our history have always turned into debate.
I now understand and I hope many of you have learned important lessons. We need to appreciate our land and those who have different cultures than ours.
The treaty of 1855 was diplomatic agreement and the whites did not fulfill their promises. Then in 1863, another treaty was created. Although Lawyer signed this agreement, many chiefs did not. Following this treaty was a cause of alarm in that. This left many tribal members leaning open to the settlers. In 1877, Chief Joseph's band was forced to move to a new reservation, starting war because of how the time this band was getting to move. Many of Chief Joseph's band moved to Kola Reservation in Washington.
And so have my ancestors still live today. My people and I continue to practice traditionally Indian ways despite the American government's attempts to teach my people the white way. Although the treaties my people were mentally diplomatic, they were not diplomacy and in fact failed.
My friends, I have been asked to show you my heart. I am glad to have a chance to do so. I want the white people to understand my people. Some of you think an Indian is like a wild animal. This is a great mistake. Whenever the white men treats Indians as they treat each other, we will have no more wars. We shall all be alike. There is one father and one mother, with one sky above us, one country around us, and one government for all. And the Great Spirit Chief rules above will smile upon this land and sit in rain to wash all the bloody spots made by the brothers' hands from the face of earth. Starting in the early 1850s, American settlers streamed into the Nez Perce's land and many debates arose.
Originally planned to diplomatic exchanges, the treaties of 1855 and 1863 sought out to create agreements and contain conflicts between the Nez Perce and the whites.
However, this attempted diplomacy failed and caused debates because white men never followed through any agreements in the treaties.
Thank you.
So what are you most proud of?
Okay. If you don't mind, I'd like to, just a few more things. I apologize for the sound. I'll let you know that that was done on a phone during, in a classroom. But the quality of those girls' knowledge is just unbelievable. So Nationals is virtual this year and they're going to be recording in front of, probably better camera with a better microphone, but they're going to be presenting it, of course, to the Nationals in June. And so that's really exciting. Real quick story that I, real quick here. One of the things I love about National History Day is the kids have to defend their work. They have to go in front of judges. They have to talk about their work. They have to explain. From what we started our History Night, all the way through Regionals and State, when they're up in front of a whole lot of really knowledgeable judges, they have to answer questions and explain what they learned. And one of the things, we talked to the teams always about finding ways to explain your knowledge. And I have to brag about Olivia over there. She's the one in the middle. She'd be probably really mad at me for pointing her out. But one of the questions was, what have you learned? Or what have you learned through this experience? And it's kind of a generic question they talk about. I maybe I learned technology skills. I've learned different things. I learned to work with other students. I learned to research, use primary sources, like they did a ton of in their project. But Olivia knew that she still wanted to make sure the judges knew about their interview with a member of the Nez Perce tribe and the information with archives and everything. So I was going through this. She basically said, I'm glad that I learned how to contact members of the Nez Perce tribe. And she basically weaved in there perfectly all about her interviews and the things she learned. And I was just like, wow, that's professional status. Nice to do that. Anyway, so that's Team Washington from Prosser, these four.
Dean, we also, you know, teacher appreciation was last week, so I want to thank you for your work. It's just, you know, outstanding. But we also have certificates for the students as well. And so I know that as an educator, performance-based tasks have a certain amount of stress added to them, whether it's, you know, drama, whether it's band or music or something like this. But I really think that it's something that our students can be proud of and a product that they can get behind. And it really makes history come alive and become relevant for so many students. So, students, we appreciate your excellent and outstanding work. We're glad that you're gonna be able to present it on a national platform. That's something I think you can take with you beyond Prosser. So if you want to come up really quick, Ezra Roy. So this is for your outstanding work in historical research. Iris Slonaker. Olivia Smasney. And Clara Wyckoff. And so Clara, this is your display right here? This is great. And it rotates too. It's awesome. We can stand behind them. Alright, so next on our agenda for the evening would be the student reports, of which we have none with us tonight. Was there anybody signed up to speak tonight?
Well, I know that she was number one.
Oh, okay.
She called in ahead of time.
Was there anybody on Zoom, Sean? Is he the only one? Well, let's get, let's go ahead and take Fred first. Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll be brief, I hope.
Okay. This is on, right? Yep. Okay, so I am Katie McLaughlin. I'm the Branch Manager of the Prosser Branch of the McCallumia Libraries. I know a lot of you know me. So something that I wanted to speak on today was school libraries. I think that a lot of times, there's a lot of passion around other things, like sports or extracurriculars, the M-word. But I think that there does need to be a voice for getting books in kids' hands, honestly. That's one of the basic foundational things we do. Reading, writing, and arithmetic, right? And I was disturbed to hear that the, some of the assistant librarians were on the chopping block for potential budget cuts. So, we just recently bought a house in Prosser and the first thing we did was put our books in it. You know? First thing we did when we moved the kids in at night was reading my bedtime story. And so that's what we value. It's, you know, it's part of our lives. And I think it's, if you can imagine, buying a big, brand-new house, moving in and telling kids, you really need to read. You need to learn to love to read. But we don't have time to go to the library. We don't have money for books. But you go out back, play sports. You could do, we have a brand-new computer. Go ahead and play on the computer. And then years down the line, wonder, why aren't they reading very well? What's going on? What's wrong with you? Why are your test scores so low? There's a, I actually have a lot of studies, which I could forward to you. There's a direct correlation in between having a qualified school librarian working directly with teachers and students and academic achievement. It's very clear. They do a lot more than just check out books. They support teachers. They, they coach kids through how to analyze and critically evaluate information. And these days especially, with scammers and inflores and just the sheer amount of misinformation online, there are many parents that are also lost. And that is something that a school librarian can absolutely do. And so there, I would like to give you guys a little bit of pressure to rethink how important that position really is. Not just the assistant librarians, but also the district librarian. That position was cut years ago. And I thought it was a shame at the time. That is a huge amount of work for one person. And I wouldn't want to do it. And so there used to be a degreed school librarian in every school in Prosser. And I think it is a real shame that there isn't anymore. That's my piece.
Fred, are you with us, ready to go?
I am, if you can hear me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I tried to get on Monday night when you were in your study session, but that didn't work. I wish to convey some concerns regarding actions or items in today's board packet. Specifically, the resolution declaring a financial emergency and the proposed cuts and reductions resulting from that declaration and the attempt to get to a balanced budget. First, as a regular attendee and now online of board meetings and budget discussions over the last several years, I know the budget shortfall did not occur in one year. The amount was generated by dipping into reserves over several years. Hundred thousand here, two hundred fifty thousand there, and so on. The board's desire to rectify this situation is admirable, but maybe misguided in trying to recoup it all in one year. Rather than recoup the entire amount in one year, which will, in all likelihood, have unintended consequences to student instruction, well-being, safety of students as well as staff, you should be developing a two- or three-year plan to resolve the situation. This year and over the next year or two, most of the shortfall can be recovered by attrition of staff as they resign or retire. This year, the retirees and resignations amount to about $775,000. With resignations and retirements, a couple more years, that could cover the amount of the shortfall. Second, having a balanced budget on paper is very different from actual implementation. The budget for a school district is different from an individual. As an individual, you know how much you will earn or be paid and you know your continuing expenses. School district funding is a guess. First, you guess how much, how many students will be enrolled for the year. Payment from the state is based on that enrollment. Payment from the state is based on that enrollment, but it doesn't come in at a standard, uniform rate. Apportionments fluctuate, fluctuate by month and are affected by enrollment. Districts don't know their total enrollment for the year until the end of the school year, but you're building the budget 10 to 12 months before that. The budget could easily been, be manipulated to be balanced by projecting more students, but that's not a responsible and fiscally good stewardship way to operate. And thankfully, our district has not done that. Third, members of the board, staff, and many community citizens worked very hard to pass the recent maintenance and levy, levy, which was for operations and maintenance. Now, with the proposed action of declaring a financial emergency, you're telling the citizens that you weren't completely upfront with them about what was needed to maintain services. Lastly, if enrollment increases, you've made potentially harmful and unnecessary cuts to many areas, programs, and personnel that are difficult to replace or reinstate where the year's already begun. I would encourage you to develop a two- or three-year plan to address the shortfall in incremental approach and to not adopt the financial emergency resolution tonight. Thank you for your time. I know the decisions you have to make are not easy ones, and thank you for being willing to step up for the community and be a part of the school board.
Thank you, Fred. All right. Cindy McLemore? Yeah, I was gonna say, that looks like five names, not one really long one.
Hi, I'm Cindy McLemore. I'm the dispatcher for the bus garage. We brought the gang with us. We know you guys are looking at buying new buses. I've worked for the district for 25-plus years. I started in transportation. I asked the same question you guys did. Why aren't there seat belts on buses? Bill Peterson was the supervisor at that time, and he explained to me how we have compartments on the buses. There are strict building of these compartments to keep the kids safe. And that's why we didn't need seat belts on buses, okay? We teach kids that they sit properly in their seats, back to the back, bottom to the bottom, feet to the floor. They're in the safest position there can be in. Seat belts have been great for the K-5 Witstrand buses. Wonderful. They fit them, okay? But for the students at middle school and high school, not so well. They're too small with the shoulder belts hitting them behind their shoulder blades. They're either too tall or too big in general. Some students are on the bus for an hour to an hour and a half wearing those seat belts, okay? Seat belts in trip buses, that's a wonderful idea, too. Wonderful, wonderful. Drivers tell me that they request the kids to put the seat belts on, request the coaches to put the seat belts on. Doesn't happen. It's in the whack. They're supposed to wear them. If it's equipped with a seat belt, my drivers are responsible. That's not fair to them, okay? We're not blaming the coaches. We get it. They're uncomfortable. The driver's seat belt is wonderful. It's no problem. Since we put on seat belts on the buses, Amy and I spend part of our time reviewing video to catch kids not wearing seat belts. So when we catch them not wearing seat belts, we have to call the parent and say, "Okay, one more time. Your kid suspended from the bus. If they can't ride the bus, they can't come to school. If they can't come to school, they can't learn. We're defeating the purpose," okay? I invite, invite, invite every school board member to please come ride a route with a seat belt and see how you like the feel of it, okay? I understand safety, and my drivers do everything in their power to keep kids safe. That is not a concern with me. But for the kids to not be wearing them properly or not wearing them at all, that's a concern. Thank you, the rest of the gang.
Hey, it's hard enough to get the kids to wear them in the first place. You know, there's no time in the morning in the AM route to actually get out of your seat and go do a walk-through and make sure they're all wearing their seat belts. And even if you do, you turn your back and you take them right off. So what's the point? All right. So this afternoon, I was at the high school loading kids, and I have time there to talk to them. So I asked them, "What is it you don't like about the seat belts?" Okay. Like Cindy said, it comes right behind their shoulder blade, the kid, and it has to go up and over their shoulder and then across their body and lock in. So they're getting neck burns. They, all the kids said neck burns. And it's, when you're trying to put them all in together and your seat belt clips are adhered, it's socially awkward for one to dig under somebody else to get their clip or their belt pulled out. They don't like that. And another thing is, I asked, and they said that they get stuck a lot to pull out. And one kid told me that his, the latch wouldn't unlatch, so he had to crawl underneath it to get out of it. So can we pull up that video of the bus? Okay, so the average time for evacuation is right around one minute. That's kids not wearing seat belts. So if imagine trying to get little kids out of seat belts and trying to get them all out in under a minute or a minute, stop this right here at a minute if you can. Yeah, one seat belt cutter on a bus. It's fully engulfed in smoke right now. There ain't nobody breathing on that bus. I've been a bus driver for 17 years, and I've never been so terrified as when I got a bus with seat belts. I have had actual nightmares at night about this happening to me. So at one minute, there was actual flames coming out the top. One minute's enough. That's all it takes to get out. It takes more with, with seat belts.
So I neglected to read the protocols. However, before you speak, could you say your name so for the minutes? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Karen Glidewill.
Okay, my name's Tina Smith, and I've been driving for 17 years also. With the seat belts, it's causing some strife because I'm constantly having to tell the kids to put their seat belts on, and then they take them off, and it's distracting me from when they take them off and they're, you know, moving around in their seat, but I can tell they don't have their seat belt on. So that's causing a distraction, and they're just looking at me all the time like, "Why is she always getting on me?" We have to get on the kids on, you know, get on them about every other thing. Be nice, everything. Don't be yelling, screaming. So that just, it's, plus with, when we had COVID in the masks and in the seat belts, it was just like, all I was doing was getting on the kids the whole time, but trying to be positive at the same time. And so at Witstrand, too, we have a kind of a light load right now, so there's good room. But one year with the seat belts, I have some bigger kids and try to fit three kids in a seatbelt seat with their winter coats on and their backpacks. It was just like, "I can't get my seatbelt on." So it's taking me time to try to rearrange, and I can't put the littler kids with the big kids, you know, so there's more room. And they're frustrated with having to, to do that. Also, my, some of my little kids, the seatbelt gets on their neck. And I looked at a little girl just the other morning, and she fell asleep, and her neck was all, the seatbelt was just all on her neck, and her head was like this. Yeah, and the other thing with having to reach and buckle, and they're touching each other, like, kind of inappropriately to try to get that thing off. Yeah, it's just kind of frustrating. Thank you.
My name is Tracy Boyle. I have been driving for seven years now. And whereas Cindy began talking to you about kind of the comfort level of, of seat belts, we all have experienced them personally. We've all been on, we have all been on a bus in seat belts and incredibly uncomfortable. But also, the, the student level of that. And then also, she mentioned, and Karen mentioned how we're looking at trying to evac a bus in an emergency situation. So I'm just going to come to you with a couple of little snippets of, of information that are a little bit objective versus how we feel about them, whether we like them or we're frustrated with them. I have done some online searching for studies that give conclusive evidence that seat belts are safer than just regular buses. Buses in, by and far, are listed as the safest mode of transportation across the board. The way that, that buses are built, seatbelt or no, are the safest mode of transportation out there right now. And they're built specifically to be that way, especially as compartmentalized, as Cindy mentioned. Those seats are high, they're cushioned, they're wide. That is a compartment. It's like eggs in a basket. It's eggs in a carton. That's where students sit. If they're sitting properly, they are well-protected. Vast majority of accidents are not catastrophic accidents. We see one catastrophic accident, and everyone goes crazy thinking, "Oh, my gosh, we've got to do the next thing." Just keep our, very, 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 very low percentage of students have died and been injured because most accidents are minor, and those compartmentalized seats do wonders for keeping them safe if students are properly sitting in them. That's what we do. We try to make sure that where our students are doing exactly what they need to be doing to be safe. And if you're going to talk to somebody about student safety, you should probably be talking to the people who are with those students in those vehicles every day, dealing with traffic, dealing with student management, and the way the bus is built and how we manage our students. The other thing I would say about that, when it comes to an emergency evac, like Karen brought up, one minute for a bus to be completely enveloped. Imagine if a bus was on its side, loaded with students in their seat belts, and the seat belts aren't coming undone, or it's kids. It's a panic situation. When you panic, you don't react the same. So those kids are just trying to get out. What happens if that bus, that bus driver is slightly incapacitated at that point? Can't help those students. And it's a bunch of little students. I get for the student management part. It's nice because you, maybe, right? But if we're, we can still do our jobs and not deal with the seat belts. But when you're in an emergency situation, like along a river, like on Byron Road, you're on a river. If that bus ends up on, in the river, God forbid, even on its side in the river, are you going to be able to get those students out? If it's a catastrophic type of situation where a bus is hit hard enough that it's on its side or it's rolled, or something happened to the driver and it's rolled, and those students are hanging, or the students that weren't belted in are impacting the students that were, can you get them out in time? And so just from a safety point of view, there is zero studies that say seat belts are more effective than non-seat belted, but zero that are conclusive in that. I have yet to find one. And so I'm advocating for the fact that as we move forward, we consider the knowledge of the drivers and the transportation department above the perceived safety of fear that comes with fear. Perceived safety is not safety. It makes you feel better. It doesn't keep you safer. And so I suggest that we move forward that way. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? So I'm thinking back to the banned bus, Tracy, and being told the back of the seat, the seat in front of you is so reinforced that that's going to hold you.
Yes.
So can you talk about those compartments, those safety paws, a little bit more elaborate on that?
Sure. Our bus, our bus frames, and I'm probably not the qualified person to do this necessarily. Our mechanics would be. But the bus frames are constructed, Amy, come on up, constructed in a way and, and adhered or connected to the floor in a way that provide a complete enclosure aside from here and one side, a complete enclosure of a steel frame. And we have to have those inspected by the State Patrol several times a year. And so they would know if anything's loose or it's not properly attached, anything like that. And then that padding on it allows the kid, if there's an impact situation, they're not hitting the steel, they're hitting the cushion of the seat. I have personally, I have personally been on a bus where I had to slam on my brakes. And kids, yes, boom, right? And they're like, "Ooh, what happened?" But they're not hurt. And is that what you're, so maybe, Amy, you could speak more to that.
Okay, so the seats are 18 inches high. They are 36 inches long. The seat back is 48 inches high. If it's a seatbelt bus, the seat back is at a 90-degree angle to the bottom seat. So that gives no room for the kids to move. If it is a non-seatbelt bus, then it's a 72-degree incline, so the kids do have more bounce room with them. The padding that surrounds the seat back is four inches thick all the way around, so it covers the metal bars. And the seats are bolted into the frame of the bus. And every day when we pre-trip, we have to check the safety of every seat. So we have to check the backs as well as the bottoms to make sure that they are safely secured before we can roll out with that bus. That means every time we get in a bus to move it and take it to pick up students, we're checking every single seat. So sometimes up to four times a day, we check every single seat to make sure that it is properly secured in that bus to move and transport students.
Thank you. How many buses have seat belts right now?
We have seven.
Okay. Would you like to get rid of all seven?
Um, I would like to keep Witstrand seat belts and then phase out the rest.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bree Denhoad. I am a substitute bus driver. I think the only sub. I drive morning route. I am thrown on a different bus any given day. I don't know the kids. I usually don't know the route. I'm searching for addresses. I say good morning. I hope the kids are finding their correct seat. But the last thing I want to do is be managing seat belts. I'm already not keeping pace on a normal route just because I don't know the route as well. And to have to stop and manage seat belts, it's, it's, yeah, not possible. Also, just to touch, they, they said most of what I wanted to say, and that's just your fear as a, as a bus driver and how in situations, in emergency situations, you have a huge responsibility. You have however many given kids on that bus. And you try to mentally prepare yourself for any situation. A fire, driving into the river, and how in that moment, if you are coherent, if you are not injured, you getting yourself, not getting into panic mode, getting yourself out of your seat belt, and then trying to get kids that are panicked off of a bus in water by yourself. It's something I personally try to mentally prepare myself when I go out on those routes so that I can do the very best that I can. When I think of having to take those kids with seat belts and try to imagine getting them out, we're losing kids. So I just, I believe in seat belts, not on buses for kids. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Raina Peps, and I would like permission to skip. There was somebody who signed in before me. Is that okay? Because I'm with them. Awesome. Okay, I was unprepared for what my fellow bus drivers were going to say. I just knew what this was all about. So I looked up some, some statistics of what I already kind of knew. On average, we have four to six kids die each year due to school bus accidents. That is phenomenally low compared to nationwide and any other vehicle. So when Ms. Tracy said that our statistics in school buses, these are the safest transportation, it is 70% safer than any other mode of transportation today on the street. safer than any other mode of transportation today on the street. School buses are designed for kids. And we all love our kids and they're little angels and we want all of them to grow up. That's why we have schools. That's why we are willing to spend the tax dollars, right? So of course our school buses are amazing. That being said, in 2020, there was a study done that there were more casualties in school buses with seat belts during fire and submersion. I'm just backing up what they said, but honest to God, I had no idea what they were going to say. There is absolutely no statistical proof of less death with seat belts. It has been debated in the Department of Transportation, the nationwide, you know, Department of Transportation. It's also been debated in Congress, like people have like been debating this for over 20 years. And yet there is not enough statistical backing proving that seat belts are going to save more lives. Now that might be a surprise to you. You might look up something and go, no, that's not true. It says right here. In this instant, it may or may not, they don't have proof, save more lives. It makes sense that it might in this case scenario. But all of these case scenarios, it causes more damage. So we all know how seat belts are worn, right? You wear them over your hip and you have them over your shoulder. Great. We've all had children in the backseat of the car. Come on, honey, get in the backseat of the car and they pop that little sucker on. It's not on their hip bone. This sucker is not where it belongs. That's why kids are supposed to have booster seats. Booster seats put that little shoulder strap exactly where it belongs. And our school buses do have these nifty little things that you can move up and down a place exactly where they belong. Safeguard is the major seatbelt manufacturer. They explain exactly how to utilize this and they were really smart in their advertisement. They say that was as much sarcasm as I can. When they say they put three average size elementary students per seat in these seat belts and then if you go further into detail and more into the description, I think that the weight and average height that they were using for their dummy dolls were approximately kindergarten to first grade. But those are our three average elementary students. The adjustable shoulder belts must be worn and adjusted by the driver to ensure proper fit. Okay, that means that your kid would have to sit in exactly the same exact seat every single time. We can't do that. There are kids that drive one bus in the morning, one in the afternoon, transfer over here for this daycare, transfer over there for that daycare and heading over to auntie's on Friday. But somehow we're supposed to adjust these every single time. We can do that. That's great. And then the minute you turn around, the kid goes with that belt and in this thing slides up. If it is not placed in the proper place, that's where you get where some of my bus drivers were talking about the neck issue. Well, that's a discomfort. It's a little redness. Who cares? In the case of an accident and a side collision, this being inappropriately, they lock in place. That's the first thing you need to know. Soon as you go over big bumps or anything, it's going to lock in place. You have Suzie Q. Here's her little neck strap. You have a slide collision. What do you think the damage will be done? You're going to be lucky if that baby ever speaks again. Then you have the hip. It has to be perfectly on the hips. If it's not and you have, and it's really front and back is really the kids are fine. Kids are fine. No matter what situation you have it in. It's the side. It's the high speed impact and it's the rollovers that we're really talking about, the big ones. Cause that's the only thing a seatbelt may or may not actually affect. If that seatbelt is not properly placed on that child's hip bones, it's up above where all the soft tissues are. I'm not going to get into details. You can look it up yourselves. Exactly what happens to small children. Seat belts, as far as waistbands are concerned, are better than for high schoolers, but the high schools can't fit into them, period. So all in all, I'm not really for seat belts, obviously. Then there's other studies that I highly suggest that you look into. There's one by the National Library of Medication, believe it or not. It's a government webpage. I have it. I think it was India that did it. Made it a law. Every school bus had to have them. Let's save our babies, right? That's what we all believe. And seven years later, they tallied it up and there was over three times the ductile. Just something to consider. And if we really, really, really want to do right by our babies, not fear mongering, then I'm sorry, we're really going to have to bite the bullet because five point harnesses are the only proven way to save lives. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you to each of you. I think just a little context and background. When we, no, you're fine. When we made that move, we thought that the state was actually going to require seat belts for all school buses. And so that was the information we were operating on at the time. And so it appears that appears to have been stalled. And at the time it seemed rational and everything else, but we didn't, you know, we didn't get on the buses and say, oh, well, there's only a few inches and you have to stack three kids in there and a teenager is not going to fit. And then the policing, as you brought up, the monitoring is difficult too, when you have your back turned to kids, but so thanks for that information. We'll take that into consideration as we move forward. And then I just want to thank each one of you. You're the first person that our students see and the last person their students see on any given school day. And so you get them to school safely and transport them safely and put them in a positive mood to learn. And so I really, really deeply appreciate the work that you do. I don't know that there's a harder job than, well, yeah, teaching, being in front of like 30 kids is difficult, but bus driving is difficult too. I know I've never driven a bus, but I've been on buses and I've seen it. And so I'm sure that it's nerve wracking and difficult. So I thank you for your service. You guys are awesome.
Yeah. So, so do we get to, do we get to pick our music like Merle used to let us do?
I'm down.
Yeah, I've done a couple of them and then kind of, you know, I, after we had, when we came back from spring break and had those snowy days, I'm kind of as almost a little bit of a joke, I sent ice cream over for the cold weather. So, so thank you so much.
Or do we have to sign or sign a form or anything? I'll show up. Let's go for it.
Thank you ladies. So we have, we have Brandy Murphy.
So I just figured out why I'm so nervous. It's because I forgot my posse. Anyway, it's Brandy Murphy. That's Brandy with an I and Murphy with an EY. So M U R P H E Y. And I'm addressing the board today to bring attention to the lack of mental health resources available to our children. I can't begin to express my disappointment when it was announced that Prosser School District chose to walk away from an opportunity to provide professional mental health services to the students within our district. In order to emphasize the desperate need for these services, I just wanted to share with you some data from the Healthy Youth Survey that's sponsored by the state, specific Tibetan county for this school year. When asked if they had felt so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row that they stopped doing a usual activity, 47% of 12th graders in Benton County answered yes. When asked if any of them had seriously considered suicide, the number was 21.1% of 12th graders have considered suicide. When asked if they had made a plan, which if you speak with a mental health professional that gauges the seriousness of their need for intervention, 13.9% of 12th graders had planned their suicide. When they were asked if they had ever attempted suicide, more than 4% had at least once and 2.1% had attempted from two to three times. There's more data for kids who had made more than that number of attempts. When asked if they had adults that they could turn to, more than 33% of seniors within Benton County either didn't have anyone or didn't know if someone was available to them. I don't know if you're familiar with what adverse childhood experiences are, but they are indicators of severe stressors for children. Basically, it can be family dysfunction. It's any adverse experience that occurs in the first 18 years of their life. They started researching this in the nineties. So they're seeing these lasting negative impact that this has on health behavior and even life potential. So if you keep that in mind, it's important to note that more than 60% of 12th graders in Benton County have experienced at least one adverse childhood experience. These results don't include experiences with racism, discrimination or poverty. So as you can imagine, those numbers are actually probably much higher. Our children are in crisis. We have to meet them where they are. They are crying out for our help. Having onsite access to a mental health professional is imperative, not only for the success of our children, but their survival. To close, I leave you with the words of Southern University Cheerleader Arlena Miller. I have fought this urge since my early teenage years. I've been dead inside for too long. I am done fighting. My battle is over. Arlena died by suicide on May 4th of 2022. I am begging you to make this a priority. Prosser School District can be part of the solution and it has to happen now before something terrible happens to one of our kids. Thank you.
Never live this down. There was a Kathy at the bottom that was kind of scratched out. All right, not a problem. Thank you. So that wraps up our comments. We are at consent items. Do you guys have anything you wanted to say to anybody that's out here?
I always appreciate everybody that takes the time to public comment.
Thank you very much guys.
Ask Amy, is Whitstrand, just because higher speeds out there, why you would like to keep the seatbelt belt? I mean. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, actually I'll make a quick comment on that too. I will dovetail off what Matt said, you know, we were kind of all under the impression it was coming anyway. And this information would have been great like two years ago. So, thank you. You can thank them all for coming in. All right, moving on to consent items. It's your fault this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Second.
All right, with the first and the second, all in favor of the consent items as presented?
Aye.
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 Thank you Jason. So that runs us to.
Harry?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. So that will move on to action items. New buys, so right off the bat, we have vouchers and payroll. entertain a motion.
I present a motion to approve the vouchers and payroll.
I'll second that.
Any questions for vouchers and payroll?
I have a couple of questions.
All right, I'm going to start with you.
And I don't know who's prepared to answer because Craig's not here. Okay, thank you. I wanted to start with item 95250 to CBC for $29,000 approximately dollars. I know in our last set of vouchers, we had a payment for $98,000 to CBC. Do we anticipate will be any other cost to CBC before the end of this school year?
It's possible. These are running start costs and that's the April. Running start plus a vocational payment. So it appears those are monthly. So I would say yes, we'll probably have another one or two.
Does the district get a discounted rate at CBC?
We, they received, if it's a full FTE, then the majority of the portionment goes to CBC and we get a small portion for basically administrative costs. If the student's less than full time, then less than full FTE goes to them, but.
Does the district pay the same amount for tuition as somebody just enrolling, not enrolled in a school district?
Well, if a student was attending CBC full time, I don't know, we'd have to do the math, but it's about 18 to $1,900 a quarter there. And then, but, but it is the majority of the FTE. Matt, do you know the amount?
I don't know the amount offhand, but they refer to it, is it being revenue neutral? And so we get a very small portion for counselors to schedule and assist students with getting into those programs. But the, the rule is, is that the money follows the kid. And so whatever that FTE is will follow, go to the university or college. And I don't think there's a difference between YVC and Grandview or CBC. I don't know. I would think that our students, it would cover, it would cover basically their tuition or, or whatever expenses are involved or fees are better involved.
So what I'm getting at is do we pay the same amount per credit hour as somebody that is not, that some, somebody that's a 22 year old not in the Prosser School District? Are we getting a discount because?
It's probably close, but I couldn't tell you how close. Like I said, I think it's about $1,800 a quarter or so. And then if there's fees and books and stuff, it's probably closer to probably $2,000 a quarter. I know for our college and the high school courses, we pay a lot less per credit than they would if they were onsite in college. 275 for Central and 325 for Eastern, but.
Per FTE.
We can find out.
Yeah, per FTE, I believe the state gives us about, is it over eight or about $8,000 a year?
First. If Craig was here, he would have that immediate answer, but we can follow up and let you know what we get for a portionment and how, and then how much of that goes to CBC? Or YVC?
I have a question on that same. If, if we have a student that is taking running start through CBC, is Prosser School District responsible for paying for their books?
No.
Okay, so the student is responsible for that?
Yeah, the student purchases their books. There is some, some programs if a student were homeless, some other things like that. But yes, the students and the families are responsible.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, my youngest did it and all it was is tuition. I'm just, I'm very soft. When my son did it, it was just tuition and transportation, I think is what it paid for. And then we had to buy all the books.
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Jason?
Well, Lisa might have more too.
I have a few more, but Jason has some.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've only got one since I'm on Zoom, but it's actually looking at the capital expenses, Fowler, general construction. Just wanted to know how we're sitting as far as heights and their scope of work to date.
Did you say height?
At heights.
Oh, at heights.
So we actually have Dax here. Dax logs in and he's part of Construction Services Group. And so later on in the meeting, we'll be addressing Whitstrand, but we can also talk about heights at that time if that's all right with you.
Yeah.
The answer to that question is, are they on time with where they're supposed to be? No. They are trying to accelerate the work and are still saying that the project will be done on time and they are, they have committed work and overtime for people to catch up.
Okay, thank you.
Got a thumbs up or thumbs down, Dax? It's not going to happen or it's going to happen.
I have a question about 1-871-85 to the Lower Valley Fitness Club. What does that cover?
No, it's Lower Valley Athletic Club. What number is that Lisa?
It is 1-871-85.
It is one-eight-seven-one-eight-five. It was on the add-on.
Right there, that one right there. Becky has to go to another envelope. A swim team rental for the swim team to use the pool.
Is that for the year?
I don't know. It says Nova, it would be for the year because it's November, December, January, and February. For the year for the, is that the boys swim team in the winter? Yeah, boys.
And then I have some observations or questions that aren't about specific amounts, but we are paying monthly to Riverside Storage and Prosser Mini Storage. So have we built in, in our new building's capacity for storage so we can end these storage agreements?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the old PHS will have a number of different spaces that, not only for board meetings, but staff development meetings, storage, office space. So that whole brick portion is the historic portion. Really, we can't do any construction or alter it to, you know, we can, we can do renovations, but we can't rip down, rip it down. So yeah, there will be plenty of storage for files and filing cabinets and things of that nature.
And we can end the storage.
Yeah, yeah, the, the struggle with that is that we had slated for that construction project nine hundred thousand, which will come in probably below what we want to do for that project. And so we'll have to think about if Witstran comes in right and we're able to use S R funds and maybe address Art Fiker. Maybe some long-term plays on property sales. And then use that money, or even, as Jason had suggested, putting a certain portion away for capital projects every year. And every five years or so, take on a new project. We also have Pilt Funds, which you have to, it's payment in lieu of taxes. Craig's talked about it before. We have to go in debt in order to, to use those. And so you can use those to pay off certain projects. So that was kind of the initial plan for old PHS. But it, yeah, it's remained to be seen how much money we'll have at the end of all the completion of the schools in order to go along with that.
I know that often is the case, once you put something into storage, you forget about it. Are we checking to make sure that these are items that we have to store? And how often does that happen?
So just, just this week, the migrant department is going through their storage and to clean and get things out as well as get the materials, some materials we need out for summer school. But another thing that we can, should explore is there are grants for transferring to electronic storage. They're big jobs, but you can hire extra people to help with that. I know at the district office, they've been working for, had been working for many years trying to get all the transcripts to be electronic. And it's, I mean, with our records retention rules, there's a lot of records, but I'm sure there's things that probably could go.
And then my last item, so we have bills or vouchers to the Print Guys, Burton Grove Printing, and Canon Services, and the Akoma Bindery. So that's one, two, three, four different print shops. Do we ever consider getting one contract to do all the printing for the district or having an in-house print shop to save money?
So we've never had an in-house print shop. The districts our size usually don't. But Canon is probably that printer, the copy.
Correct.
Bills. The other ones, I don't know.
Print, prints already set up at certain print shops, maybe they might have templates already set up, and that's why we might reorder from that print shop. But let me go through and pull these for you.
It's, it's certainly something that could be explored. All those jobs are kind of, you know, they're always, they're different, and it depends on what it is. But we do have a lot of forms and stuff that are probably historically at some, at one of those places, and we'd go back to them for bus request forms and things that have not changed over the years. But yeah, I mean, it's certainly something that could be looked at for economy to inefficiency.
Those were all my questions.
Thank you.
On vouchers.
Would you like Becky to follow up on that with the questions about the printing jobs?
I think maybe that's something we could look into, you know, economic, compiling them, maybe redoing the forms and, you know, along the lines of just because we've always done it that way, we don't have to continue doing it that way. I mean, it's so easy now to create documents on your computer. That's something perhaps even students could do as a service for the district.
Yep.
And printers do so much more than they did twenty years ago. Not everything has to go to a shop.
Well, not everything has to be on a piece of paper.
And not everything has to be on a piece of paper.
And also, Jason, just to circle back to Fowler, looking at their application for payments, looking like they're eighty percent completed according to their application.
All right, so if there's no other questions, approve the motion to approve the vouchers and payroll.
I think we have a motion in a second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Jason just sent me a text that had something come up and he had to step away. Approving as well. So next on the list is the second reading of Policy Procedure seventeen thirty-three, which is the board member compensation. There's three parts to this. Has everybody gone through the three parts? All changes were all appropriate for what everybody wanted. If that's the case, now we don't go, we go second and then final next time, correct?
No, the second reading, second reading is finally, yeah.
Hearing that, I would entertain a motion to approve the second reading of Procedure seventeen thirty-three, all three parts.
So moved.
I'll second it. I second it.
All right, is there any more questions or comments about it? All right, not hearing any. All in favor of approving Policy Procedure seventeen thirty-three as final reading? All right, so then we move on to Resolution zero-six dash two-two, declaring a surplus computers. Is there anything we need to know, Sean, or just normal, old and broke down? Okay, well, I would entertain a motion then to approve the resolution to declare surplus computers.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, first and second, any discussion? Right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do believe it calls for a roll call vote because of the resolution.
Does it? All right, fair enough. Lisa?
Aye.
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 Jason may or may not be back with us. He's not chiming in, I'm guessing he's not. Resolution passed. Next, we have contract ratification with the Prosser Association of Educational Office Professionals. Entertain a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
I'll second that one.
All right, any questions or comments? Again, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
He's back.
All right, next on the list would be ASB Athletic Information Out-of-State Request. And if I remember reading this correctly, we had already approved, but they wanted to add a couple more days. I think that's what I read.
I don't see Kevin here.
So long ago. Seaside? Yeah, they were already going to Seaside, I think, for basketball camp. Yeah, extending, extending their time in Oregon is what it was.
Looks like they're leaving.
A tournament to it.
Leaving the ninth instead of the tenth?
Yep, that's what it appears. I was thinking it was a couple, but yeah, just one day. And then I guess the ASB Activities is just an informational part. So if it's just information, do we actually have to approve anything?
It's out of state travel you do.
Oh, for the extra day? All right, well, if that's the case, we have a motion to approve an extra day of out-of-state travel for basketball?
So moved.
I'll second Andy.
Any questions or comments? All right, guys, hearing none, all in favor of approving an extra day of out-of-state travel for the basketball team?
Aye.
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 All right. So Policy fourteen hundred. Is there? Oh crap, there's another page. I'm sorry.
Hey, Andy?
Yes?
A part of the other, what we just approved was a whole bunch of stuff from Clear Risk, et cetera. Did I hear that right? Are you, are you getting to it now?
Well, we're getting to it now. I didn't realize there was a second page. I got to the top of the first one and then my bad.
So I would do a motion to approve the out-of-state travel for Thrive for their conference?
Well, being as I missed it on the first go-in, we have to do this again. We have a first and a second. Was there any more questions or concerns about that part?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The rest is just information. However, the part from Clear Risk was fairly telling. So Policy fourteen hundred is the next thing on our
Andy, there was one more recommendation. There's a, there's a third page. The recommendation is to move on the turtle purchase finalized protective net solution, purchase softball cage netting, fitness room, weight room, safety padding insert for the south window and fitness room accordion flex connect wool mats, north windows and console.
So, but I didn't realize we had the
We've done some informal, I think informally the board approved the turtle.
Yeah.
And some of the other ones, we were going to move forward with. And I think we've talked about this before, but you can either, you can either give the nod now, formal or informally. But you'll approve them when we do vouchers as well.
And it's, it's coming out of the bond. The new construction cost, it's not coming out of a different fund.
The
I don't know about the turtle, but the net should when we get there.
We do have contingency funds that we could, that we could take it out of. The sticker price on the netting was, you know, if we go back in time, that was kind of the concern there, that it was a, there was some sticker shock involved with how much that cost. And then even Title IX issues that, you know, if you're putting money into one field, then you probably shouldn't put money into the other field. Or for their team, yeah.
And that was recommended by Clear Risk to make that purchase for the turtle cage and the golf net departments for additional apartment protection. That was part of the walkthrough.
Yeah. Yeah, there are a number of different things that I asked Kevin and Brian Aber to, to look at. Everything from stadium to tennis courts to the baseball field. So, and we've heard from different community members that they've said, you know, my kid has shins once after he runs on the track. We can do better. We had an official trip as they were walking down that, that hill from the locker room or the press box. So there, there are facilities that need to be addressed.
And it said we, we completed a grant application for the baseball purchases through United School Insurance Program. They usually typically it says grant five thousand dollars and we requested ten thousand dollars.
So what exactly are we approving though tonight? Are we approving the extended additional day for the, the boys' trip, or are we also approving repairs to the tennis courts?
So we already approved the travel in the first vote.
Right, right.
So that's done.
Okay, but are we also approving now the repairs to the tennis courts and
If you look at the recommendation, Peggy?
I'm looking at the recommendation, but I'm also looking at
Their only, only recommendation is for the turtle purchase, the net solution, and the softball cage netting, the fitness room, the two purchases, not anything else.
Now, the travel, we have to approve.
We already did.
Yeah, no, I, but the rest of this, I was under the impression was just a recommendation, sort of a knock us on the side of the head, say, you guys need to look at this. I don't think we actually need to approve anything, do we?
Correct.
No, like I
I'm not comfortable with approving the rest of this.
Yeah, like I said
Right now.
At least it's correct, there's only, you know, four things, but the turtle, we had already discussed, and I thought we were moving forward already. In fact, the softball meeting, I think we had that discussion as well. But as a recommendation, I don't think we have to actually do anything.
But why is it in the agenda?
I don't know.
You can, yeah, there was a time during COVID when like our, our reports from principals and different activities administrators did have recommendations as far as we need more masks to make this happen, or we need thermometers that we can test kids with. And so there was a period of time where we were using recommendations. If you want to act on them, you could do it formally, you could do a straw poll, or you could not do it at all. I believe we've talked about it in the board's offer direction to move forward with that. And so that was the, that was my plan is to act on the turtle and some of those things that we had discussed before.
Is it because the amount of the purchase that it needs approval? Is it over fifty thousand?
No.
The way, the way he has it listed, the way Kevin has it listed is ASB Athletic Information, comma, out-of-state request. So we have to approve the out-of-state
Which we did.
Yeah.
Literally just
Yeah, we just did that, yes.
So
And then when I read over this, the areas of discussion, I think these are just things that need to be done. We're not saying
That we're doing, we're not
We're not doing it right now.
Right.
Right.
Now, he does have a recommendation for the ASB Senior Class Luncheon. So sign agreements for the princess and ready and out. I'm perplexed as to why he wrote this up.
Right.
I'm just gonna take a guess because, but when I look at this, just the portion that says PHS ground sidewalk with Clear Risk. So they looked at all of those things, and at the end, Clear Risk said, get, get the turtle in the nets. You need a pad in the window of the wrestling room for safety, and you need whatever that accordion flex connect thing is in the other room. Like those three things need to happen is what Clear Risk is saying. Yeah.
Okay.
The other things are things that need to be done, but he's not saying do that right now.
Kind of like a wish list.
Yes.
Yeah. It's in a wish list. There's the insurance company saying do it or your coverage is going to be.
Yeah.
In jeopardy.
The whole thing is really just unclear.
Pretty big.
Yeah. I just want to make sure we're not agreeing to something that.
Yeah.
You know.
I think we should start at the top and approve the ASB activities. We've already done the out of state travel and then finish at the bottom recommendations, but I think we should pull out the protective net solution, um, at least for the short term.
All right, go ahead, Brian.
I was just gonna say, I I believe that Kevin was trying to be proactive here with the Clear Risk and try to mitigate any future concerns by getting some early information in regards to the student safety and health concerns that we've heard about from our community. So I know that he did invite Clear Risk to come and take a look at our facilities that started with the netting and the baseball field and they made their way and walked the entire, uh, sports complex and looked at all of the things just to consider projects moving forward. My understanding of this, I've looked over it too. I have not had a conversation with Mr. Lusk about this, but my understanding is that number one, I do know that we we do have graduation procedures and and activities coming up. So that is a recommendation there that would need board approval to, um, rent the facility, Princess Theater Facility, because that will come out of ASB, but they do need approval to use those funds. Number two, there were the two out of state travel, um, adding a tournament for the boys' basketball team. We were invited after it was already approved or invited to the they call it war of the border or something like that, battle of battle of the border. Uh, we were invited to that after it was already approved, so that's hence the extra day, um, in the seaside tournament. Uh, the third thing was also an out of state travel, which was the Thrive Coalition going to Orlando. And then the fourth, I think he just wanted to confirm the direction with the turtle, um, and then the netting and then the other pads for the wrestling room. Those those were the four things.
Okay. So I agree with Jason. I think we need to back up because even though it says it's an informational, it does have a recommendation of sign agreement for the princess.
Right.
And for ready now.
I move, I move to approve, uh, uh, to sign the agreement for the princess and ready and out for ASB activity.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for the approval for the senior class luncheon and everything that goes along with it for the day. Any further questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we've already done the two out of state travels.
We just have the thrive.
Where you did that one.
Thrive as well.
We did do this, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then. So it says move to purchase the turtle, which we already okayed finalized the net solution, uh, finalize some other solutions. It doesn't say we have to sign or he's asking us to, so I'm going to say that is literally just a recommendation. If we're all in favor on the turtle, we'd already discussed.
Yeah.
The rest of this we can bring up, you know, I mean, if it's.
It can come back as a as a proposal.
Absolutely. So I'm gonna say this time or what the third or fourth time we're done with this one.
Yep.
Sorry to screw that one up so horribly. All right, so now finally on the policy fourteen hundred. Conduct order of business and quorum.
Thank you, sir.
And this is our change of venue, correct?
Yeah.
So myself and I I know a couple of the board members had brought up, as beautiful as the space we're sitting in is, it's kind of awkward. It's a, you know, we're higher than you kind of setting. I don't like it.
Yeah.
What we were discussing for anybody else that's not in the in the mix who was moving our regular meetings upstairs, our regular Wednesday meetings. Uh, the thought is that if we do have something that requires so much seating, we can roll the bookshelves out of the way for the evening and still have plenty of room and have a slightly more I don't know, different environment, so.
I'm in support of moving it to the library. It's easier to hear. It's very difficult to hear up here.
We have trouble hearing you guys.
With the caveat, I think we need to be miked in those meetings because I know people are having issues hearing us.
Yeah, if it's an official Zoom, everything, we we just still need to, I agree.
And I think we need signage for people as to where to go if you need to use the elevator and make sure someone's there. Because if you have mobility issues, that is a very difficult room to reach. So perhaps signage or, you know, um, a subway sign even, we don't want our meetings to appear like, okay, up the stairs, through the hallway, behind the library and tap the door three times. And you can come in.
Yeah. Can you guys hear us okay when we're speaking? Yeah, because sometimes it's really difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just, I don't know, I I realize this is a great space, but it just feels so, yeah, in in person, like I, it's hard to get used to, so. Anyway, with that said, uh, take a a motion and a second to approve policy fourteen hundred.
So moved.
I'll second Andy. Do we have to do something special to move to move it? To formulate move it?
To be honest, I don't know.
Pass the policy and then we need to notify the Secretary of State that we've changed our meeting location.
Just shoot off a letter and done with it or an email or.
That's a good question for Matt. I don't know if he should drop that letter.
I'll look into it and do what we need to do.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Was there any other comments?
No.
So all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, gang, from here on, uh, Wednesday meetings are going to be upstairs.
Good.
So we have the resolution zero five dash two two, uh, reduction in educational operations programs declaration of economic emergency. Do we have a, uh, a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, approve resolution zero five twenty two, reduce educational and operation programs, declaration of economic emergency revised. I'll second Andy.
Was there any questions or comments about this?
I have a few.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think there's a lot more information we need before we can pass this to be fully informed on this measure. This is not something that's commonly done. District Attorney said that this is the first time he's seen any kind of a document like this. You know, we had so many first graders in October, we added a class and took, you know, two kids out of each class after being established in their classroom and put them in another class. How do we justify an enrollment in Brooklyn State? It hasn't happened overnight. I agreed with everything Fred Bray said. It happened over ten years. It didn't happen overnight. I think we need to find out more information. I think we're rushing into this. And, you know, what what's the end game with passing it? Is it a workaround to take action that we want to take? Or what's the purpose of passing it? We also received just under one million dollars from the state in emergency enrollment decline money. So between that one million dollars and the approximate, I think what Mr. Bray said was seven hundred and forty thousand dollars in, um, money attrition through retirements and resignations, that almost, you know, that would be one point seven million dollars and the budget shortfall is one point five, one point six million dollars. And I do agree that that state money is a one time money and we can't be relying on that. But to just have pushed a levy through our community saying there's not going to be cuts, we're not going to take any action. But if you don't pass the levy, everything's on the table and everything's going to be cut. And two weeks later say, okay, well, we're going to cut some stuff. Seems to lack transparency. And I think we could table this and think about it later and get some more information. I think we're rushing into it.
Is this something we could do a, like a study session or?
The the timeline that we're under is that if there is certificated staff that we're going to reduce in force, we do need to notify them by this, by the fifteenth. And so this Friday, we would need to notify if there's anybody who's certificated, who's going to be reduced in force due to budgetary reasons, um, we would have to notify him by Friday. And so this is part of that. Would, of course, uh, you know, what Fred, what Fred had said is true. We would have to probably go back and re-study, um, the budgetary allocations that we made and, uh, reestablish some priorities, um, because some of the cuts that were involved, some of the cuts that were involved in that we talked about on Monday night, um, may not be feasible, uh, without this. And so yeah, it's a, it's up to the board. It it certainly, and this is, this gives us the ability and even the notification of a rip, gives the ability to take action if we're notified, but it doesn't mean that we have to take action. So if we give somebody, uh, notice of a reduction in force, um, the board or or if if we give somebody a notification and we change our mind later, we can always have them back. Versus if we don't give them notification, we can't remove them at all.
And Deanna said on Monday night, also same thing that Fred Bray said tonight, that with resignations and retirements, we didn't think we would have to do a reduction in force, that there would be enough attrition.
Yeah, there, um, so we're talking about specific to the teacher level. So if there's anybody outside of the teacher level, um, administrators, um, within the district who do have certificates and they have to have a certificate to operate or don't operate, then this would, this addresses that that party. The, um, the teacher's contract does have specific language in it that it has to be, I believe, over four people that you're going to reduce in force. And so that's the trigger. Um, you you, in order to reduce in force, you need at least four people that you're gonna lay off. Um, so.
That answer your questions? Would you still like to table?
Got a.
Okay, oh, let Jason speak.
Yes, Jason.
I do have some some comments on this and I know it's kind of a a an interesting dynamic, but we passed the levy by what forty or fifty votes? It wasn't a a an overwhelming majority that that supported the levy. So I think that it personally tells me that we need to really look at our budget, be financially, um, most strict when we look at how we're spending, you know, taxpayers' dollars. And I think this is potentially an important way to to do that. Um, and I don't think we have to do anything, but it it gives us the opportunity to be able to do stuff. So I would, I would support it.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I do, I do just want to recognize Elisa's perspective on the fact that there is, there is close to a million dollars in enrollment stabilization. At our last, uh, kind of work session, I I'd said it was over five hundred thousand and it's it's almost double that. It's close to, close to a million. So we're looking at nine hundred. So it's, you know, the question becomes, do we want to come up with a plan that addresses it over time? And do we want to utilize that money or do we want to not act like that money is there and try and budget, um, do a balanced budget and and, um, and no, Craig has said this. He heard it from Fred tonight as well. Budgets are budgets are kind of estimates that you propose or you think you you think you're going going to spend. There are overages there. And so it's tough to project, say, for instance, um, from year to year, I don't know how much we're going to spend on legal fees. That's just, you know, depends on the year. Um, some years we we use Mickey Jackson more than others. Um, so.
Okay, I had two thoughts. We, if we do end up doing riffs, we need to pass this tonight. So we're covered. Is that what I'm being told?
Yeah, the, so the board taking action just says this is the state of the district and we do need to take action to address this. So it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to go through with it, but if we're going to deliver a letter this Friday, to say this is notification that you'll be reduced in force, um, then this, this also adds to my ability i- if ever disputed, that, you know, the board took action and wanted to address it. So it wasn't just a arbitrary move on my part that I dreamt up.
And my second comment, all the work we've done trying to figure out where we can cut money was because we need to get the our budget back closer to balancing. We aren't doing this just because we want to. We're we're trying to get that closer to being in balance.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, that's exactly right. I mean, we could go back to the drawing board, taking into, I think at at some period, taking into account that there will be a million, you know, a million dollar shock and then looking at how we're spending, uh, grant program monies as well, to try and address some of those shortfalls. But, uh, when we do that, we get away from, uh, kind of our objective of balancing a budget. And so it's a little bit of a change of plans there that we're saying, okay, we recognize that there's, you know, there's going to be a shortfall, but we're not going to do all at once and it's not going to cripple the district. And so we'll do it incrementally over maybe a couple of years. And when we, uh, when we have teachers who retire or resign, um, we'll consider if that position is needed. And, uh, you know, part of that was also, we talked about, uh, staffing and the policy around high school graduation requirements and, you know, reducing that, um, so we could adjust some some of the staffing at different buildings and get back to a typical school model. So.
So I have two questions for you. Uh, one of the things we discussed Monday was potentially, uh, not so much riffs, but moving, uh, moving a high school teacher to an elementary room or something, if necessary. Does this help with that?
Uh, we're not going to reduce it, no, because we're not gonna, we're not gonna, um, let teachers go. We have enough teachers who.
I just mean if they don't want to go. Reassignments or.
Yeah, so there's contract language around, they call it involuntary transfers. And so the teacher is not saying, I'll transfer. I would actually like to teach eighth grade. We're actually dictating that at at the at the district level and saying, we need you over here, um, in this building, you know, with these kids to balance out certain numbers. So both both contracts, actually PSE and PEA have language around, um, transferring employees.
Okay, and my second question was, is there a sunset on this? Because I don't see one.
No. No, I had, I had, um, our legal counsel review it today. Um, he made some changes and kind of bolstered some of the language. Um, riffs are uncommon. So it, yeah, like I said, it it kind of gives us the, it gives me the power to move forward if that's the direction. If that's not the direction, then we can go back to the drawing board and address shortfalls in maybe a different manner.
Well, I'm not necessarily against that on the short term to kind of get things in line. My concern is that this document is still valid, you know, two years down the road or, you know, unless we're complete idiots with the budget, we we should be out of this or well, maybe not out, but at least have a plan.
Yeah, one of those plans is through, uh, policy. Um, I know that Elisa's referred to this in the past. We talked about it a little bit Monday night. It's so to to set goals around a percentage that we want in cash reserves. And it could be a range from, say, five percent, to ten percent. Uh, but there would be language in there that are, in essence, that policy would dictate or trigger, um, a resolution of this nature.
So then do we as a board have to go back in at some point a year, whenever, and avoid this, or?
That you're out of a budgetary emergency?
Yeah.
It would probably go along with that policy. So it's tough to argue that you're in a budgetary emergency if your enrollment's up and you have, let's say, like twelve percent in your cash reserves. So, but our enrollment has been either stagnant or declining.
So if we approve this and then go into policy mode and write it accordingly, that we get to ex-fund balance and things are covered and, you know, the enrollment's back, or at least we've done what we need to do appropriate in the policy, then that could sunset this.
Sure.
If there's votes. If there's enough votes.
You mean to pass this resolution?
No, on the back end.
Never thought of that.
My other question is, so it reads, whereas the loss of these revenues will necessitate that the district consider significant educational programs and operational reductions. So what educational programs are out?
We talked about making cuts and, was it LAPP and Tidal and the adoption of curriculums? Things like that?
Avid was in there.
On the list.
I'm having, I don't think there's any specific program that we have designated to be cut from the list.
So this would allow the superintendent to make all those cuts without having to come to the board?
I would say that we establish priorities and.
Number three says, the superintendent may take all actions authorized to the superintendent by law to address this economic emergency. Number two, the board authorizes the superintendent to develop and present a reduced educational operational program due to anticipated revenue reductions and the resulting economic emergency.
Ultimately, still answers that.
That's not what this says.
Well, you're the governing body. So it's tough for five individuals to take action. That's why the position of a superintendency exists. So there is an authority on the district who can act as an agent of the board and make those cuts.
So if a cut's made by the superintendent in his discretion, there's no coming back to the board. It's just the superintendent according to this resolution.
I would like to say that this is what we talked about Monday night, the cuts that we went over to try to get in budget. All the board members were involved and quite active in it. I think we should pass this resolution. And if we don't have to make these cuts that we talked about and agreed to, then they won't be made, but.
But Jeannie, there's nothing that says that. This says the superintendent may take all actions authorized. So we could add language. Reading this is not.
I think, I think number two answers that, at least the way I've seen it, or the way I read it, is number two, the board authorizes superintendent to develop and present a reduced education operational program due to anticipated revenue reductions into the resulting economic emergency. So, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, we're approving the budget. And the way I read this, and we approve all the cuts that we spent two hours looking at on Monday and looking at the updated sheet that was sent out on Tuesday. So, I mean, still at the end of the day, we're approving the budget. We just now have, I guess, a resolution that says we can cut if we need to.
What if we added language to say that the cuts have to be approved by the board? Because I agree that that says that on number two, Jason, but then when you read it, it ends with "and," then it goes to that number three, and the superintendent may take all actions. So the final action is the superintendent. So there's nothing that comes back to the board. And we do pass the budget, but this allows the superintendent to make any cut without having to come in front of the board.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Ultimately, I'll tell you that we talked about budgetary priorities. It would be my desire not to lay anybody off. And so I love each of our employees. I think that each of our employees do really great work. We discussed overages in certain areas. There's always a potential of litigation if you let somebody go. You know, potentially they could say it's arbitrary. But if, you know, like I said, we don't have to make any cuts. And if the board does not want me to make any personnel cuts, then we would just table it or decline it, and then that would basically tie my hands and not allow us to do that.
Well, Lisa, could we add it just in? Add a number four, all cuts are approved by the board?
I think we could table it tonight, add that language, and have it a meeting to address this before the deadline.
So that would be tomorrow or Friday morning?
Correct.
Well, with that said, if we did it, we would have to be able, there would have to be at least three of us, either tomorrow night or Friday, with new language, would have to show up to be able to get it done in time to be legally invited.
Right, we'd have to have a quorum.
And I'm actually okay with that table on it until we have all the language figured out.
This part of the language has not changed since we've looked at it on Monday night, and we all looked at it. And we're supposed to come back with questions or concerns. Is that correct?
No, it changed. Sean changed it today, but counsel, this is updated.
Yeah, there have been some updates to it. You know, but we have presented drafts of this when we anticipated the levy not passing, and then when the levy, or, you know, in those cases. And so I've tried to put it in front of you a few different times for consideration and for basically counsel or direction. So. But if, I would say, I would tell the board, or my advice to the board, or recommendation to the board, is if if we choose to table it, then I would say, then choose not to pass it at all. Because we're already dealing with a very tight timeline. I discussed that with our legal counsel today about how tight the timeline actually is. And so, yeah, the timelines are so tight that if it's not passed, then we're really staring down the barrel here the, you know, next two days and taking action on the district's part. And so if we're going to table it, I would say, then it's probably not worth doing at all. And it would be better to go back to the drafting board on the budgetary side and look at priorities again.
The biggest single concern I had was the sunset part, and if we can write that in, I'm actually okay with it.
I'd be in favor of having this tool that we can move forward with. Whether we use it or not, having it available and signed and available to us if we need it, I'd like to pursue that, so.
Well, I guess with that said, we have a first and a second. I'm sure we all have our opinions.
I move to table it, add the sunset language, the board approval language, and bring it back. We can meet by Zoom. We can, we just need three of us for a quorum. I move to table it, get it right, and don't have a sloppy resolution that can be interpreted and does not have a sunset clause. We have to go back and fix it later.
That said, we have a motion to table. Do we have a second? Or do we have to finish the first one first and go back? Usually you finish the first one and vote on that.
Well.
Since a motion's been made and seconded, usually call for a vote.
I would agree. Well, with that said, then we all have our opinions. We have a first, a second. All in favor of approving resolution five zero dash two two? Please say aye.
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 All opposed?
May.
All right, well, motion passes. We don't need a second then for the table. Which finishes up the action items. So with that said, we move on to discussion items. District buses inventory? Amy?
You're up.
Great, I'm going to bed.
Okay. So I heard you guys wanted to know about my buses. So I have the first spreadsheet we have lists all of the buses with the route numbers, the age, the mileage, how much depreciation is left on it, and how much has been paid. And the depreciation payments go into our TBF fund, which is our transportation vehicle fund that is paid by the state for the buses to reimburse us and can only be used for the purchase of new buses. So that is how I fund my next bus purchase, is through the depreciation payments of buses we have already purchased. They're paid over thirteen years at different interest rates that OSBI has their calculations for. So you'll see lower payments based on the months per year that we have that bus. And then we'll see final lump sums on the final payment. So we have two buses coming up on final payment. And those are two thousand tens. The top two on the spreadsheet, bus seven and bus fifteen. As you can see, we do have out-of-service buses. We have two that are sitting in maintenance that are out of service due to bad engines and transmissions. Those will be going up on the surplus sale this year. I also have just acquired a new bus that has been deemed out of service permanently through the insurance company. It was the one that was T-boned in the snow. They, I'm working with the auditors to get more money. They're trying to offer us sixty thousand dollars in that bus we bought for over a hundred and seven thousand dollars. So I'm trying to get them to push up the amount of money because that will add to my request to buy a bus to replace it. At this time, we have zero spare buses, and we have a lower number of trips. So we're able to use our trip buses for route buses when they go down. There's only three of them right now to kind of move around and use on routes. What was that?
Was it the insurance auditor, the insurance auditor that's giving us the drama from who hit the bus?
Yeah, today he came and Jaime and I were over there underneath the bus up at maintenance with him saying, what about the twenty thousand dollar muffler system? That's broken. Can you see the cracks and twists in the frames? Can you see everything? And just like on a side note, the safety factor of these buses, we could lift the bus off the frame and put all the seats in a brand-new bus. None of the inside was damaged with that T-bone accident.
What about the motor and tranny?
Yeah, the engine is good, the transmission is good. Just the differential, airbags, our exhaust system, the fuel line, everything that is between the wheels on the underneath of the bus is toast. And that took full impact. On the second accident that we've had this month where the bus was rear-ended, because we buy the reinforced bumpers, there's minimal damage on that bus. Our WSP State Patrol allowed us to continue on and not put that bus out of service because it impacted, and it did what it was supposed to, and there's no damage. So that's good. Let's see. So with the age of our buses and the aging out, we have some pretty old buses that are still out on route. I have, let's see. I have five buses that are over fifteen years old. And as you know, when they get to a certain age, which is about twelve years, little things that don't go wrong start to go wrong. And it's just, it's how it is. It's been that way. And my mechanics are fantastic. We have all figured out the different noises. So I'm out there helping them to figure out, okay, I hear this noise. Let's look here. I hear this noise. So we're working and keeping them running and active. One of the main things we're running into is everything is backordered. I have an extremely well-working relationship with Bluebird. And while I can call the owner and say, hey, help me out here, what can I do? He puts me in touch with their lead mechanics, with their supply department, and helps us get a jump on that and try to get ourselves in front of all the backorders. Right now, we have a trip bus that is out for a DEF sensor. Those are nationally backordered. We're number three hundred and forty-eight on a list of over seven hundred different districts that have buses that those are out. It's a known problem for buses from two thousand fifteen to current. So we only have one bus because we've worked really hard to keep them up and running and clean. But that is our trip bus number seventeen. So that's a huge impact to have one of our brand-new buses down and out of service, and we can't drive it because it shuts the engine down, and you can't go more than three miles an hour in it with it.
Got to love technology.
Yeah, yep. And yes, there are workarounds, but the liability for Bluebird or Cummins to reprogram that, to remove that DEF sensor, breaks a bunch of EPA laws that nobody's willing to do. And we want to make sure that we stay within those on that. So I've been working really hard with Bluebird, and I have some quotes. I guess I should start with the bad news. They dropped their contract with the state of Washington, OSPI. Therefore, their prices have increased twenty percent, and they expect another twenty percent increase before next school year.
What are other options? International or?
I'm working with Bluebird. International and Thomas have not removed their state contracts, but their product also calls for a lot more repair, a lot more service, a lot more, Bluebird's like the high-end quality with the less work with the new ones. And it's kind of my preferred brand because I know all the drivers like it. And it's something as silly as Thomas's have mirrors that look like ant heads that go like this. That blocks your line of sight. You can't see peripherals coming at you or on the sides of cars coming this way because the mirrors block you. Bluebird has the sectional mirrors, which gives you sight in between, so you can see all the way around. And that's a huge safety preference that I like better.
I think we've always gone with Bluebird, but I know that there are other districts out there that do choose different, you know, different buses or bus, you know, companies. There's, and I know that there's a difference. It's like buying a Honda versus buying a Toyota, right? And so there's.
There's a huge price.
There's preference and pricing and things like that.
Yeah. There's a huge one. So I worked out with Bryson, who sells Bluebirds. If we can sign a quote for this year's pricing that they've given me, they will honor it for delivery four years out. So if we can buy the bus, I can sign the quotes and schedule the deliveries for the next four years, so it's not a big, huge financial impact burden at once. And then for the next four years, we'll get buses. And so we have front engines, which we do on a thirty-five-foot base, and that is the route buses. And that helps us get through the narrow country roads better, get in the turns at the schools better. It shortens our turn radius in town at all the stop signs. With seatbelts, those are a hundred and ninety-one thousand. Without seatbelts, it's a hundred and seventy-two thousand. The rear engines that we use for trips that have all the under storage on them are a forty-foot base. So it has that extra five feet. So they're a little bit harder to drive on certain routes just depending on how tight the roads are. That's a hundred and ninety-six thousand with seatbelts and a hundred and seventy-eight without seatbelts. And then I'm looking to get one special. And then I'm looking to get one special needs bus, which is a front engine, and it's a thirty-five foot bus specked out with a wheelchair lift, and that's a hundred and forty-seven thousand. Um, with the depreciation payments, and if we were to take out a loan, the depreciation payments over the next six years would pay for all of these buses. Because we're averaging about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year based on the current inventory that we have.
How soon do we have to have an answer for you?
I need to know by the fifteenth. He said he would honor it till the fifteenth. Yeah. Yeah, and they actually met me at my office today with the quotes because their system was down. And I told them I had a board meeting and I needed to know exact prices. So when I came in off route today, they were waiting in my office for me. Um, with them.
Your plan is one a year, two a year?
Uh, they don't care how we do it. I just have to have the signed quote in.
What's your plan?
Uh, my opinion would be to get one sped bus because we're running one that is fifteen years old right now. Um, and one, uh, front engine, which would be a route bus. Because we do have one, um, rear engine trip bus already ordered in. We will pay for that September first of this year, out of the TVF payment on August thirty-first.
Now, were you wanting both of these then for next year? Or is it going to be one next year, one the following year?
Um, I would do, um, so those two would be the twenty-two, twenty-three year. And then the next two, the twenty-two, twenty-four year. Because with the amount of buses we have coming off of depreciation, the sooner we get them in, the higher our payments will be to make the payments on them.
But all of the buses will be paid for with depreciation money?
Yes, with my TVF fund.
Great.
And as long as we get even the twenty-three, twenty-four buses ordered now, even though we don't take delivery for a couple of years, we get them in.
Correct. They'll honor the price and we won't have to pay for them till September first of that school year so that we have our transportation fund already deposited.
Great. Sounds good.
Was there any questions? Hey, just, I had a question on, so that resolution, um, I don't know if we took a roll call vote on that.
We did not.
We did not?
Um, can we, can we jump back to that really quick and do a roll call vote? So, and you know, like we did on the last resolution?
Do we need to also do a formal vote on approving her buses?
Um, it was a discussion item.
But if she has to know, give them a final answer by the fifteenth.
But it's not an action item.
Yeah.
So it was noted wrong. Incorrectly.
And so we can, um, if you, if you want to do like a straw poll or, um, if we're in, um, basically, if we're okay with moving forward with that, like informally, we can make that move.
Well, I guess if it can be done informally, I'm fine with it because just, just the savings, uh, for today's prices in three years is gonna, I mean, that's gonna be twenty-five percent add on our money right there. If we can do it informally, I'm fine with a yes move forward, but I don't know that we can.
I think we'd have to look at what's the difference between a straw vote and voting under the Open Public Meeting Act. I mean, if something's gonna be an action item, it's to be noted as an action item so the public is aware of what's happening. It's a transparency issue. So I guess that's the question. I mean, can we put it on for notice and do it by Zoom? You know, with proper notice and do it that way.
See any reason we couldn't? Is there any way we can just back up and?
We approve the agenda at the start of the meeting.
Gonna see.
Amy, I got a comment. Would they wait till the eighteenth? If we could push it to the eighteenth?
Amy, he's asking if they will hold off till the eighteenth to give them an answer.
I can try, but I can't guarantee they will because they want to get these in before Bluebird raises their prices because steel went up again. And
Tomorrow too.
Yes, and so did our foam because it's oil-based and they don't have the oil to make it for our seats that make the density, the right specs.
Well, if we've already approved the agenda, we can't go back. We can't turn it into a, a, an action item. And legitimately, we can't do a, I guess, a straw poll. Then I would say we put it on a special as an action item. If you could contact them first thing in the morning, I guess, and find out if they'll give us, I don't know, when are we gonna be back here? The eighteenth. If they will give us till the eighteenth, we will have an official answer for you. If they tell you to take a long walk off a short pier, then we will try to put three members together, do a quick agenda for a Friday afternoon Zoom or something.
Okay.
And, because I, it seems to me that it's a, it's a fiscally sound way to do it. I mean, we need the buses anyway. And if we get them ordered now, making the decision now is gonna, you know, benefit twenty, twenty. Well, the fifteenth is technically Sunday.
Yeah, so.
But if they give us, if they would, if they would give us three extra. Yeah, twenty-four hours. Yeah, it is.
We need to do is be able to post, post a Zoom meeting and, um, for, for tomorrow afternoon or for Friday and
Twenty-four hours.
Okay, for, for Friday, for Friday, and then we can get it done.
So if they'll give you the three extra days, we can post it for next Wednesday's meeting.
So we can't take action on the eighteenth because that's a study session. So we, if we just post a special meeting tomorrow with twenty-four hours notice, we have a one item, action item agenda, call the meeting to order, approve the agenda, action item vote, done. And you do it Friday morning, Friday at any time, you know, just as long as there's twenty-four hours notice.
Yeah, she's right. That's gonna be the way to play it, so.
Yeah, we'll just get it done.
We'll, we'll post it. We'll have a, an official answer for you by close of business Friday.
So I also had questions. Did you guys want any answers on the maintenance side of seat belts?
I think you guys covered it very well ahead in the meeting.
Okay, because the cost of replacing them and how they break, they didn't go over. So like when one seatbelt goes down, it's five hundred dollars to replace it. And if we were to lower and only put two seatbelts in a bus, that kills our, uh, capacity rating on them, so. And when we do have them down, we can still use the seat for the other two seatbelts, and then we just have to red tape them until we get them fixed and seatbelts are backordered.
And I had a question, Amy, this, uh, the, the fifteenth, as long as you have an answer by Friday where you can get to them. I don't know if they're back east or.
I was actually gonna go outside and call them after we were done and tell them.
Oh.
So, and see. They're pretty good at working with us because we're, I have three Thomases. As soon as we're, we get aged those out of the system, then if we're a hundred percent Bluebird fleet, we jump up to their VIP twenty-four seven customer service, everything. And it jumps us ahead with, um, parts, with purchases, also with discounts. So our discounts will get higher. Right now, we average anywhere from eight thousand to ten thousand a bus. So it should get higher when we're all Bluebird.
Good to know.
Alright, thank you very much. We will get back to you.
We'll make it work.
Soon as we have something official for you.
So we're going back to the resolution?
Oh, that's right. That's right. So back to, what number was it?
Right here.
Alright, so back up to resolution zero five dash two-two. We need to do a roll call vote, even though it was forwarded or first, second, we voted, uh.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number zero five twenty-two, Reduced Educational and Operation Program. The resolution part of it.
First, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Well, any discussion?
Unfortunately, I can't, I'm, I can barely hear. What, what are we doing again?
Alright, so we have to go back and do a roll call vote on the resolution, uh, zero five two-two, the, the economic and operations. We went ahead and, and Peggy did a motion. Jeanie did a second. We're gonna go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa?
Nay.
Jeanie?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Motion passes, and that is the roll call vote. Then we will jump back down now to policy twenty-one oh seven.
We just called them.
Good enough.
Thank you.
That's true. Alright, guys, so, policy twenty-one oh seven, Comprehensive Early Literacy Plan.
I would move that we table items B, C, D, and E to next week's work studies so we can have in-depth conversations about them before, before it comes before the fourth. For formal. I mean, I know it's on as a discussion item. That's the purpose of the study sessions, the work sessions, to have those deeper conversations. And I, unless there's something that, I mean, and no action is going to be taken tonight.
Yeah.
No, the, so the board had asked that we start reviewing policies.
Right.
Uh, what we started with was those policies that are essential. And so these are required by the state to have these policies in place. Um, is, is what's been mentioned before that we're out of compliance. Some of these policies were passed in like twenty fifteen, uh, but they are essential, and so districts have to have them. And so it's mostly a review to get to a place where we're even compliant with the state. And so that's, that's why they were on there. Uh, number one, to show the board that we are honoring their, their request and taking action on that. And second, that we've identified, uh, priority policies to bring us back into compliance before we start to review all the ones that are outdated.
No, and I appreciate that. And that's exactly what I want to see happen, is updating these policies and getting to them as soon as possible. But I think, you know, we don't, I don't want to rush through them. I want to have
Absolutely.
Deep conversations about them. And I think that is best began at a study session. So that would be why I'm making a motion to table them, just to Wednesday.
Actually, I agree with that. That's what the Wednesday meetings were for, actually, was this exact thing, so. Uh, we have a motion to table B, C, D, and E.
Thank you.
Alright, so we have a motion, a second to table those. We've already discussed it a little. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Dax, you're up. So construction bid update is what this is listed as.
This one, that's working. Hopefully my voice holds out. My voice is about in and out throughout the day today.
Much time at karaoke last night.
No. I'm just talking to contractors mostly. Okay, well, I thought I'd start with, uh, uh, Keen River and, uh, Prosser Heights and, and give an update on those. Keen River is on schedule to be done in August. Is what, uh, Dan Pierfroy believes and Fowler is telling us, so that is the goal and, and feasible. The furnishings were ordered in March and they're gonna be here in August, so it was, yeah, and then. The practice baseball field was brought up and, um, was dragged in some topsoil, was amending the existing and that was imported and, and seeded, but there was, uh, this practice field may not be adequate. So Dan was coming up with two options. The first option was to just level the field and, and reseed it. And, uh, the second option is just to allow it to continue to grow and see how, how it plays then, so. It, uh, so.
We talked about, I, I spoke with Dan about that, and, um, in fact, Jason, uh, Jason and I, Jason Rayner and I have talked about it. But, um, Dan had said that to level the entire, that entire area would be crazy expensive.
Yes.
And to reseed it. And so we're looking at doing some, I think we had talked about doing some spot repairs on some areas that we could level, um, or fill in with some topsoil. And then maybe we wouldn't have to hydro seed the entire thing again. Um, it would just be specific areas that, that we were uncomfortable with, how it, how it looked, how it appeared.
Right. And that was an aspect of the option I didn't actually mention, but you could go in and be infield, redo the infield, clean that up, uh, air, maybe sod some of the areas, so where the the baseball fields tend to have the most impact of the
Yeah.
Grass, so.
Yeah, that was, um, and then there were just some, I think some tractor tire tracks um, that, you know, maybe they drove over it while it was muddy, and so they left some trench, a couple trenches.
Yeah.
Nothing that we couldn't take care of, but, um, initially we were, I, I think it was, we were looking at leveling the entire thing.
Yeah.
And he said, that's really gonna, you know, be a hit to your guys' pocketbook and those contingency funds. And so, you know, the other option would be to do specific parts and, um, you know, address, address those areas that we felt like were out of, out of line.
And probably a primary focus, the infield and then come out.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, I will pass that along and we'll.
So if they're talking contingency funds, I'm assuming that means they're not planning to fix anything themselves. I mean, it was never an outstanding area.
That's to be determined.
Parked on it and tore it up, shouldn't they be the ones to fix it?
Uh, the areas that they did, yeah, we could, uh, but I, I believe the, the practice field had some of those anomalies already, so.
Oh, yeah, like I say, it was never perfect, but I mean, it was.
But yeah, the places that they damaged it, they contractually have a responsibility to fix it and definitely track that. So, going to Prosser Heights, as mentioned, Fowler Construction is working on a schedule analysis to accelerate the project to completion, but our analysis is they're sixteen weeks behind on, uh, four classrooms in the library. So as a contingency plan, Dan walked the job with, uh, Jody leave us this past week to look at if, if they weren't able to complete those four classrooms in the library, which is the primary area where they're behind. And again, we're gonna get that update. We'll get the update from Fowler on the, uh, what do you say? The seventeenth? Yeah, so, once we get that, we can take a look and compare that to our analysis and see if it's feasible. I mean, you can work overtime, but you can only fit so many people in spaces now. The walkthrough with, uh, Jody, and I'm not gonna really speak for her impression of it, but there was two classrooms in the school that won't be utilized because they don't have the kids for it, is what is the notes were. And the other classrooms that could be used were the, the art room and, uh, the art room, what was the other, um? And an instructional classroom, so. Basically, that, that would give me the ability to occupy and have the school in function, but obviously not the optimal goal, so. We'll keep working on the schedule, we've been pushing the overtime hard, and they've agreed to do that, so. We'll see on the seventeenth what the schedule looks like and how they're gonna accomplish it, and then it, from our side, it becomes a micro-schedule as you move through the month, so every day is gonna be critical on hitting that mark, but you know, the, the look is that the four classrooms in the library are gonna be the problem.
We're, we're already starting to have covers, you know, kind of preliminary conversations on our end with our labor units about what that may look like if, if it doesn't open on time, and so, we were talking about, you know, that I think the kind of pivotal thing is, is that teachers are able to set up their classroom and don't fall under the gun, and so we were we're kind of kicking around ideas about doing like a Friday half-day and then coming back that following week and doing Monday half-day or a shortened day, and so, giving, giving teachers a block of time, you know, on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, to get, to get their classrooms in order, and then even into that week, you know, we have a shortened day on Wednesday, early release, or that's been part of our professional development schedule, so. Just looking at options, we're, we're planning around the same thing about there being kind of an extension on that timeline. Just so, just so we're prepped on our end, and then the whole moving, you know, the moving process, I think that we've learned some lessons that were pretty critical here when there was a, you know, that mass exodus moving from the high school into old PHS and a new PHS, and so, we're, we're kind of refining our practices as we go along there, so we'll be quicker as well, so.
So, it's six to eight weeks behind, what's the projected completion date?
It would be in, end of October.
End of October, and who's paying the overtime, us or the contractor?
Contractor.
That's great.
Now, that six to eight weeks is based on today, so.
Right.
We're, we're gonna do everything we can to get the spaces available, you know, and it's just, when looking at it now, it's, and based on previous jobs and it, it's gonna be tough, just because you, it's step, 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 you can't do it all at once, so, as you're going up, it it takes a certain amount of time, and like I said, you, there's a point too with, with overtime where you start to lose your you know, when you're working fifty hours a week, the, the trade folks tend to decline in their production, and as those weeks go on, week two of fifty hours and three, it declines even further, so. They'll try and find a medium in there, but that's where the schedule analysis and the pace they can maintain will give us a better idea of what they can achieve and, and then translate that into yeah, we made it, or a contingency plan, so your, your functional to the best of ability.
Is there a penalty in our contract if you're late?
There is, there's a liquidated damages within the contract. That is assessed on true impact, so dollars that the district incurs, but with the modernization, you run into a lot of things that are unforeseen, et cetera, so those are tracked and, and although extension hasn't been granted, because kind of refused to give them additional days, when you go down that road with liquidated, liquidated damages, you know, they're gonna come from the other side and say, well, but for these things that we we found and impacted us resulting in change orders and change in scope, you know, that has an impact as well, so that has to be measured against that, so.
Have they asked for an extension?
Pardon?
Have they asked for an extension in days?
Oh, yes.
Has that been approved by the board, or who approves that?
Oh, the senior project manager, Dan Perfois, in the construction meeting, and the changes to date has just denied them. Because, because he didn't feel they were on the critical path or warranted, meaning that, yes, it was a change, but the the critical path of the schedule wasn't being impacted, which is optimal for the district to analyze in that way, and that would be critical path is basically the line through the project, that if that scope of work is impacted, then it extends, it extends the contract. And, you know, going in that direction is you know, not our goal at this point, we still wanna find a way to get it done and, and schedule it, and based on the outcome, you know, that discussion can be made with also analyzing the, the schedule and was, you know, a little more in-depth regarding if there was any critical impact, but there's obviously different opinions from the management team and the contractor, you know, with regard to what was an impact and what isn't an impact to the critical path, so.
I'm in the meetings pretty much every Tuesday, and, and Dan is pushing very hard. He is pushing very, very hard on Fowler to, his relentless pursuit has got the overtime in place and some of those other things, and so, well, Tuesday, we await Tuesday and the new update.
You're correct, and yeah, he has been pushing hard, and my office is about one, two, three, four, four offices away, and I hear the conversations from there, so, it's a he wants to get them in, get everything finished, but the six to eight weeks is actually his analysis where they're at right now, so. To pick up that much time over the period we have left is, is pretty aggressive, so we'll see what they can do. And if, as we move through, we'll develop contingency plans to make it as accommodating as possible, but obviously, the goal is to get it done. So, is there any other questions about Keen or?
Was that just about Heights, or was that about Heights and KRV?
Pardon me?
Was the update just on Heights just now, or is that Heights and KRV? So is KRV also six to eight weeks?
No, no, our projection now is that KRV will be complete in August. Just Heights.
Thank you.
So.
Then we, so, I'd ask Dan to either have you or him or even Ed. We're, we're kind of prepping for the Witstrand bit, and we know that Architects West has had a third-party consulting firm come in and kind of project prices, so I, I wanted to kind of just review what we think we'll see on, on the seventeenth, when we do go out to bid, and so, when we're sitting in that meeting together, you know, the the board's there, and we go through that same process, that we're not caught off guard by any of the variables that we're gonna see within that meeting or within that bidding process.
Correct, so, on May seventeenth, we'll receive bids from, we hope significant amount of contractors, right now we're tracking four that are on the plan holders list, but that doesn't mean that there aren't others that are taking a look at it too, and we're obviously in touch, we work with most, most of the contractors that'll be bidding the project and try and encourage them to bid, so. The one, well, the inflation is a major thing, and as you said, Ed, as, as part of Architects West contract, they have a requirement to do independent estimates, so they have an outside firm that, that's what they do, professional estimating, and their construction document completion estimate was, oh, dramatically over our budget, and we knew that inflation was gonna be an issue, and obviously it is, and so, what we did this week is, we went back through the budgets and everything is dialed to actual, so the high school cost is basically complete, and the costs are reflected in the budget. The same with KRV, if, with the exceptions of if the furnishing does not go over the budget, and Dan said that that is what is occurring, that they're, they're gonna meet that budget that was established in for furnishings, so that was the anomaly. The construction contingencies, they're, they're likely to not be any, it'll be utilized on the project, so. Conservatively, we're not forecasting anything from KRV or Heights for excess contingency, but I think that's conservative from Danny, doesn't wanna, you know, project something that is potentially not likely. The high school, we, we did finish, as you mentioned, with excess contingency, and that was utilized to, first step to bolster Witstrand, to try and combat the inflation. So. I basically developed two budgets, and we had, Craig had provided us an Essar amount of actual three million seven hundred thousand five hundred and five, so, that, that Essar figure, because Witstrand is the Essar project, it, it requires different tracking because it falls under Davis Bacon wages, and there's a tremendous amount of reporting and tracking of wages that has to occur, so. Capturing with one project is the optimal way to go, so, if the if the bid comes in under, you'll still spend the Essar on the project, but potentially defees dollars back, bond dollars that you're not utilizing, does that make sense?
Okay.
So. I developed two budgets, one was our budget at CD bolstered with the high school and reconciling the budgets, and that left a one point eight million dollar unallocated, which is basically the Essar coming back. Then after receiving the independent estimate, which I believe is an overly conservative number in, you know, and there's other independent estimators out there, and they're being very cautious with their estimates and very conservative with contingencies and inflationary costs, so it, it's, it's been difficult for them to get a hold on the market, because the market's changing so much day by day, and another positive is, your school bid is an anomaly, because there aren't very many bidding in this, this summer, and that is because during the COVID, most districts shelved their bonds and did not go forward with elections that they planned, so. This two-year cycle, which it takes about a year, sixteen months to design a project and bid it, there, there just aren't that many occurring this summer, so. I believe that the contractors will be, that target schools will be a little more aggressive to the extent that they're still have to have a margin, and they're going to be, they're gonna be including that inflationary marks for the material equipment, et cetera, across the board, and that figure has been anywhere from twenty-five to thirty percent, even more on some items, but and that will translate into the bid, so, again, I just, just for informational, these, these budgets are reconciled, so, high school, Keen, all those reflect the awards and the contingency and all the soft costs are actuals, with the exception of Witstrand, which is yet to bid, so. The second budget I ran was pushing towards the independent estimate amount, to see what that looked like, so, and how close we could get to that figure if he was truly accurate, so. I took the one point eight and I flooded that into the Witstrand project, so you could see the range or the capacity to award between the two. You could have calculated it and said, well, if we just keep the one point eight out, then, you know, we could do it that way, here's the bid, here's the budget, add two. But as you add money to projects, it also reflects down and trickles down into other elements of the project, because we carry a five percent contingency of the construction cost, other items that, you know, permits that are affected by that dollar figure coming into that project. That doesn't mean that you're gonna spend it, it, it just means it's providing you a range of what you can afford to do, and maintain contingency and FF and E and your dollars, and obviously, we wanna a, a good bid that isn't gonna go that direction, it's gonna stay towards this other budget, and there will hope to be potentially more unallocated, but that's really where we're at with it, and I'll, I'll provide each a copy of this if you'd like, so. You will, you'll still maintain the nine hundred and five thousand for the admin, which was the original figure that would still be in place.
So there's still the nine hundred thousand for the old high school?
Correct.
Okay, so we're not totally broke then? We spent it all?
You've committed, the funds are committed, and they've been held without it, you know, we didn't and that's the way all the projects were approached, even Witstrand, we made sure the money stayed there as we we designed and scoped and bid the other projects when it was a little easier to quantify at, at estimates and evaluate them, so we dialed those into what each project was afforded, and so.
What if the bids come in way high?
What's?
What if the bids are coming in fifteen, sixteen, seventeen million dollars?
If if the bids are coming in that high, what I would prob, I mean, what I would probably, and we're obviously thinking about that, but if, if the bids were to come in at a point you did not have the capacity to award it within these ranges, I would probably suggest that you shelf it for a period of time, anywhere from four to six months likely, because they're projecting that the cost of some of these materials, as supply chains pick up, et cetera, that we're gonna see that drop back down towards fall, and we'd have to evaluate, you know, because it's new construction and we're starting a little later. You know, you wanna have a lid on it before winter, but that probably wouldn't happen, there's some impacts, but the good, I mean, there's no good thing about rebidding, but it is in But it is in the architect's contract, if we had to potentially make some changes to various materials or equipment that might achieve the same goal, but were less cost. We could look at those things to bring the cost down to value engineer back. I, I don't think there's a lot there to, to value engineer. I mean, it's a, it's a very simple existing building and my, and I'm actually quite familiar with Witstran because some twenty-five years ago, I was the project manager that renovated it. So it's, so I don't, I don't see a lot of things in the scope that, other than if you went from ten classrooms to eight, which I know isn't uh something that you wanna do.
Is it a more conservative move to not bid now and to bid it in four to six months? As opposed to rebidding, like you said, rebidding?
I think because there is not a lot of projects bidding now, I think it's worth taking a shot at it. And then if it, if it is over the budget, we'll regroup and, and then look at going at a later date that's strategically better. And, and uh inflation is, drops off and I mean, it, it skyrocketed so quickly. And uh so it's, it's been a little difficult getting even contractors, even on, you know, changes in scope, because the material costs are changing, so, you know, daily. So it's, it's been difficult for them, it's been difficult for us to evaluate, be, you know, some of the costs. Because, you know, when you kind of have a steady escalation and you, you have your independent estimates that are more accurate in range, where they're not adding um what I'd call allowances to, to the independent estimate in order to make sure they're covering it and telling us and the architect and the project management team that, and it could bid this high. So we're hoping that that allowance strategy that they're utilizing isn't gonna be isn't gonna be as high as they have uh uh or forecasting or including in their estimates. And I talked to another estimator in the last two weeks and, and he said, you know, it's not something I normally do. But I finished the estimate, I looked at it and he used the word, I was scared to send it. So I added a million dollars to it and then sent it. And I said, well, that doesn't really, doesn't really quantify. And he goes, no, it's completely against everything I do, and I've been doing this a long time. But, you know, they don't wanna be, their job is to help you know when you're needing to modulate the scope of the project in order to hit your budget. So they're a great tool and part of the team, and we work with, you know, just a couple, there's only a couple that do it. So they're tracking every school project bidding, and when you had a lot bidding, it was easy to come to conclusions on what things were costing. So you might have ten schools you could look at and see what they bid at and get the contractor breakdown after they are ordered. And they can really dial in, you know, the cost of the work. Well, now, there's, there's very, very little bidding. So there's not a lot of uh construction school-wise for them to draw from. They're actually like waiting for Witstran to bid, so they just have something to, to look at. So and so it's um it's not the optimal time, but I think you take a shot at it and see if we get a good bid and a good contractor. And if we have to make some adjustments and look at a, a different date that uh we're gonna get a better price, then that's probably what we're gonna have to do. And I would use um in, in March, the year COVID hit, we had a project bid in Afraid of, and the kind of uncertainty and, and escalation, inflation that kind of, because nobody knew, the low bidder was on a twenty-five million dollar contract, was five million over. And the project team regrouped and bid it again in uh a couple of months later, after people had a general idea of where things were headed. And uh school construction was deemed essential workers. So, you know, the construction kind of had an idea that, yeah, we're gonna be able to build, we're gonna be able to operate. And, and the things we're gonna have to do to operate are gonna have some impact, but not, not as great as the unknown. So as that, as that became more clear, the prices came down and the project was actually awarded. There were a few changes, but for the most part, the bulk of the project was still there. So, so that's about the best example I have between now and, and the, the thought pattern the contractors are going through right now with regard to the wages. And even if your bids, I'm hearing like they're getting the bids, you know, up to the due date, you know, incorporate and then to their overall bid from electrical, mechanical, et cetera. And at times, the vendor that's bidding says this bid's good for twenty-four hours or a week, you know, to commit. So it's, it kind of trickles all through the, the construction system and operations. So it's, so one, I guess one question I would have is you, the bid is on the seventeenth. If uh, I mean, obviously after the bid, probably gather and evaluate the bid, see if we can determine a low bidder, see if it's within the budget. And if it's what I call slam dunk, meaning all the pieces are there, it's in, in budget, et cetera. Are you want, wanting to award it on the eighteenth or, and then you have the twenty-fifth?
Do it on the eighteenth anyway, because that's.
Okay, that makes it easy then. So probably an agenda item would be the May twenty-fifth, which is a regular board meeting, right? So hope we'll be on the agenda and be back here with the recommendations award and uh get building it.
With things changing day to day, if we do have a slam dunk on the seventeenth, would it be worth our while to call something special that week to get it taken care of?
It's not about, you know, it's not uh.
I mean, is that, is it?
Yeah, that, that could be uh, you're absolutely right, that we could make a difference um between uh off, you know, if you make an award recommendation or we make an award recommendation, provide the resolution, then it takes some time to get the, you know, the contract signed, et cetera. But normally, if we issue after the resolution, we issue a notice of intent to award that allows the contractor to get their insurance and their uh pro, payment performance bond and the things that they have to have in place before we can sign contracts. And so we can accelerate that process if the, if the board meeting were earlier. And um I don't know if you, you wait to open and then try for a special board meeting or, or uh.
Well, I mean, I, I'm assuming we could call one relatively quickly. You know, we have three days that week, so if, if we did have one that came in, you know, done deal, we could round everybody up and meet upstairs and.
You could just have a special meeting at five thirty on the eighteenth before the work study or the study session at six.
Good call too, couldn't you, in a row?
I wanna say that uh when we did the initial one with P H S, we called the meeting, we called the meeting to order.
After the bid.
Took, yeah, took bids, took bids, or called the meeting to order, took bids. And then convened into an executive session, came out of it, took action and awarded the bid that day. Um so I, I may be off on that, but that's, that's what, if my recollection serves me.
Yeah, if it's a slam dunk, then I could draft the resolution about five minutes.
But uh what time are the bids coming in, it's like a midday thing?
Um three and four, I think, base bid at three and the alternates at four and open both at four. And then we have a, a supplemental deliverable forty-eight hours later now for the rebar and structural steel. Whereas you have to list the mechanical, electrical and plumbing that you're utilizing in your bid on the bid form. Now um the state has expanded that with uh rebar and structural steel. And it's odd, but they give them forty-eight hours to turn that in. If they don't, then the forty-eight hours, then their bid's non-responsive. But a lot of the contractors submit it with their bid. Or if they're low or potentially low with, you know, you have the alternates too. And often, whatever combination of alternates are selected, it can determine who's the low bidder. So if that's the case, you got, you know, they're, they're submitting, you know, going back to their office and getting it together and submitting it. So if they're in contention for award, the ones that aren't, they easily just.
At least I'm thinking you're correct, we should just do a thirty-minute special. That's still on, a thirty-minute special meeting prior to our workshop meeting on the eighteenth. It's within twenty-four hours of the time the bids open, so. Does that sound reasonable?
Um yeah, if the, you know, if there's the.
Oh, that's right. That ain't gonna work. Yeah, uh Jason, you, you caught what Peggy said, right? That's the, the eighteenth. We were talking about doing a five-thirty meeting uh prior to the work session to take action, but that's the same time that we'll be in our or no, the work, the work meeting start at seven.
Right, right.
We start at six, Jason and I start at six. So we could do five to, be a long night, but.
But I'm, I mean, for those of us that are not in the safety meeting, I'm not gonna wanna come at five-thirty and then sit around for an hour before the regular meeting starts, so. Sorry, but I pass.
Well, um.
But if you wanted to start your safety meeting at five-thirty and do safety, safety meeting from five-thirty to six-thirty, and then we could have our little special meeting and then jump right into our.
I'm happy to sit through the safety meetings, if we do it at five-thirty and Andy's there and Jason's there, that's a quorum. And we can go and have it smooth that way.
The other, I don't know if it's, as long as they're in the peanut gallery, it's not, is it still considered a meeting?
Do we know?
Yeah, so the.
I didn't, I didn't understand the question.
If, if, if Jason and I are, are running a safety meeting, even if the other members, they're not part of it, they're just.
No, you can't, you can't have two meetings at the same time.
No, that's, I, not, not, not two meetings. Jason and I will run the safety meeting, you guys just hang out, watch the safety meeting. We'll take the other one, is it still considered a quorum if you guys are not involved in the meeting? I don't remember.
Oh, we'd have to note it as a special meeting if we stayed.
Yeah, so.
It's not a committee, it's a, it's a committee.
Yeah, the way.
That's a good point, Andy.
The way that, this is on too, I think. Yeah, the uh my understanding of the Open Public Meetings Act is that board members can be in the same place at the same time. Uh for instance, like church or an athletic event, as long as they're not discussing school business. And so if the two of you are discussing school business and there's a third in the uh like uh vicinity, um then it constitutes a meeting because two, two are discussing, even though a third may not be sharing input, they're still there and present, listening to two board members' conversations. So it would, since you are talking about school business, would qualify.
Okay, um. Yeah.
Yeah. So three, you can award it, we, we don't have to make a decision tonight, we can think on it and come up with some, a couple of different schedules or proposals on it.
We, wait, wait and see what happens on the seventeenth, we'll call it quick if we need to.
Right, we uh post bid, you know, we'd hope to have the decision makers there grouped so that we can discuss base bid plus combination of alternates that are priorities potentially. So that is really the, the item that can take time, you know, evaluating that and discussing it. If, if you, your bid comes in where you can add some of the alternates and then it becomes which ones. And if you're, if it's taking that time, that could delay it as well, because you might wanna think on it and or have group discussions based on which alternates are.
The other thing is, we, would we need to know which, if board members were planning on attending the bids? Because then again, if we had more than, had three people, we'd have to post that as well.
So I think we can, like what Andy said, we can decide that next week, we don't have to decide that tonight.
No, what, what she's asking is, is when they actually take the bids, when they come in and uh in the past, we've actually gone and then participated and read through them and all that. If that's something any, any board members wanna do, if there's more than two, we have to either tell somebody to stay home or post it.
Uh maybe just advertise it and.
Jason, would you be interested in going?
Yeah, um when, what, what is it again, Monday at what time?
Tuesday afternoon, probably, what'd you say, four o'clock?
Tuesday afternoon.
Four, four o'clock, bit, we'll actually open the bid, so.
You wanna be there a little early, but it'd be Tuesday afternoon, about three-thirty.
Um yeah, I think that, that would work for me at this point.
Anybody else?
I can't make it.
Well, I, I would like to, uh so I guess plan on Jason and I being there. And then uh we'll fill everybody else in as quick as we can.
Right, and we'll, we'll evaluate too, if it's something that, you know, we're not able to do right after the bid, because we have some dill, due diligence to do depending on who bids. And so we have some aspects that are just in our court. And if there are decisions, we can put together scenarios and make recommendations to like a couple.
Yeah, I remember the high school bid, somebody actually put an extra zero on their bid that. Yeah, but that was the official bid, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it made it uh five hundred, five fifty, five hundred, five fifty, was it, what was it? Five hundred million, yeah.
Yeah, just a one extra zero, all it was was a typo, but.
Yeah.
They wouldn't have won anyway, but I do remember that, it was an interesting.
Yeah, that was uh.
So any more uh questions for Dax on where we stand or how the process is working? Well, sir, I guess you can go get dinner now.
Okay, I, I was just gonna ask real quickly, some of these items that were listed off, uh and Dan may be aware of them, like the tennis court resurfacing and things, are those some of the things uh you want us to assist with?
Yeah, so um in the past, and you and I have talked about it, um about uh, and this goes back a number of different years, about doing a long-range facilities plan. And um, you know, like a, kind of a ten-year plan with two, five-year periods that we're gonna address certain things within one, five-year period and other things within, you know, and continue to roll it out. Um similar to, similar to what we see in like Kennewick School District does with some of their, their facilities planning. And so um that's been something that has been absent from, from Prosser. And so I do think um we need to uh start to come, come about or develop plans uh that, that do address our facilities instead of letting them go bad. uh, that, that do address our facilities instead of letting them go bad, um.
Right.
Having the community see like dilapidated buildings and things like that. Um, I thi- I think we could, there's a uh better mousetrap to be built as far as kind of saving money and, and addressing things as needs come, come about.
Yeah, we can definitely assist, assist with that. Okay, well, it's nice to meet some of you, the new board that I haven't talked to.
Yeah, we haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah.
How's Dax doing? Where's Dax at?
I actually get out here sometimes.
Two of those for one of our board members, um, who's not here tonight, just like give it to him. Uh, for Jason. It's good seeing you, man, yeah.
All right, Dax, have a good night.
Yeah.
All right, guys, so moving on.
Your way when big and when they don't go your way, win anyway.
All right, guys, so moving on, uh, we're into reports, uh, I would say this one's Craig's, but Craig's not here. So Deanna?
Thank you, um, I have three quick things, um, uh, two things before I talk about the list. Um, I am going to um send some information to Selena for the study session next week on the new sexual health requirements for the state. Um, I also will have the cost of the arts adoption at that time, I'm, I've worked, worked with art teachers today. And then there is a list that um we, we said we'd bring to the board that shows the positions to be posted, but I should have had someone check my work, Tammy was gone, so she did not, found two mistakes, that drives me crazy. Um, kindergarten's listed twice on there and they should not be at Witstrand, there's just one position. Um, and then the fifth, the fifth grade bilingual is actually a fourth grade, uh, but the wrong grade level. Uh, the life skills position at Carevie actually was already posted and we have interviewed for that position, we um because special, it's so hard to fill, we went ahead, we posted that one actually several weeks ago. Um, and then the remainders are positions that are open at this time uh, that, due to various reasons, resignations, um, people may be moving a position, emergency certificates, when we have teachers, we hire an emergency certificates, we're required to repost those positions to try to find someone who has a certificate for that position. Um, yeah, so, I don't know if you have any questions on that or any of my other items. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, you're up.
Uh, I just had a couple of different items, uh, teacher appreciation was last week. And so, um, thanks to all our teachers. We appreciate you, um, thank you as well for your advocacy during uh the levy. Um, you're, just your advocacy and service to the district. Um, so, yeah, you guys are awesome, um, our teachers are, are kind of the backbone of the district and so they do just a lot of great work with our kids as we were able to see tonight. Um, Patterson, we're still waiting to hear back on a counterproposal from them. Um, we had, we had decided on what our counteroffer was. Uh, they said that they are committed to resolving this before the end of next year. Um, but this is year four, um, I'm hoping that it doesn't bleed into year five, um, that we're still talking about this next year. But we're still waiting on hearing back from them. Um, of course, Dax talked about the, the bid on the seventeenth and we're hoping that comes in at the kind of the sweet spot or the right price. And then uh, the E S D, uh, we had a, a couple of people in from the E S D today just to uh review and refine our processes and procedures uh in our finance department, so. Um, Chris and I and um, some of our labor partners were able to meet with them and just go through um some common issues that we had and uh problem solve and troubleshoot, so that was a pretty productive meeting today.
Thank you. Board reports. Jason, you wanna go first?
I got nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
No report tonight.
All right, thank you. Jeannie?
Yeah, the only thing, uh, yesterday I was um, um, happy to sit down in the interviews for business manager. I enjoyed the process and um, we had some good candidates.
My turn, um, like was I said, on um, the interview process for the new business manager, that was very interesting and um, also, I'm part of the uh, exit committee or exit interview for the audit next week. I think Jeannie's sitting on that also next, uh, the seventeen, no, eighteen, I think it got moved to the eighteen. And other than that, other than board meetings, uh, that's about it.
Well, I'll uh bring it to a close then, uh, I wanna start by saying it's, it's National Nurses Day. And we have uh a couple of outstanding school nurses and some, some great health room uh helpers to go with them. They've been uh beat to death the last year and a half, so if you see them, thank them. Um, my wife's also a school nurse and I couldn't be more proud. Uh, next thing I wanna talk about is Jason and I went to a meeting at the Big Barn a couple of weeks ago. Very informative, very interesting, uh, what came of that is we're gonna put together a parent group. Uh, I, I wish things would have went a little quicker, uh, Sarah Miller was here tonight, she's kind of heading it up. Uh, are both of you gone or just one? Oh, you're both, okay, so for those that don't know, this is Pashkeys, sorry, I, I don't remember your first names. Okay, Paul and Whitney, um, we were, they were gonna put together a half a dozen members. Um, we are gonna start, I think, with probably student handbooks. Uh, have them read through, make suggestions, because I believe we're gonna go back to handing out uh actual physical handbooks. I wanna make a point of the future of, of introducing everybody, but everything kind of drug on tonight and it is what it is, so I appreciate you guys. I guess it is, so anyway, I'm sorry you guys had to sit through a long, boring meeting, but uh we'll try to recognize everybody in the future and we do have plans uh for the group moving forward. Like I say, I think we're gonna start with uh probably reviewing the student handbooks. Uh, Jason and I have discussed it and discussed it with Matt and it seemed like a good place to start and we'll just uh, you know, give the group uh, new jobs, I guess, periodically. I would also uh ask any, any community members, you know, come to the meetings, make suggestions, come to the safety meetings, make suggestions. Uh, the more ideas we have, the more things will change, so that's uh, that's all I've got. Um, the only thing listed from there is future meetings. Oh, that's right, we do have an executive session tonight of which we'll go into soon as we close the regular. We have a study session, work session on the eighteenth at seven. Prior to that, uh, Jason and I have our, our safety meeting, I believe that one's starting at six, both are upstairs. And then uh, the next official regular meeting is on the twenty-fifth, which although it says auditorium, will now be upstairs. So if nobody has anything else they wanna discuss, we'll call the meeting adjourned and we will move into executive session. Oh, all right, well then we're moving into a recess and the adjournment will come after. How long? All right, meeting is adjourned, it's, I don't even know what time it is.
It's late.
Ten after ten, have a good night, everybody.